Hey, how you doing? I'm in OK. So, yeah. Good. Are you in the block? Off the bed?
Yeah, I hope so. I mean, it's been a longer.
Yeah.
Longer hospital stay than anything else. I'm still back. We've completed a month.
Okay.
Are you still out of state for some?
Yeah, I'm in Iowa. In my brother's bedroom. Lovely.
There's not posters on the wall, though.
Yeah, that would have been quite a few years ago, probably.
There's a chorus growing up there, though, right?
Oh, it should be. Yeah, yeah, we're getting a lot of, a lot cooler here, actually. Cool and getting a lot of rain, so. Me high by the Fourth of July, that's what.
That's exactly right. Other Mid, other Midwesterner, not quite as far west as Iowa, but. Gulf Park.
Yeah, yeah, it is. I was growing up, I thought it was the most boring place on earth. And now I love it.
Um, nice, quiet, and like, even space.
Yeah. Most of it is.
Uh, do you all remember, uh, uh, very recently, Tom? Uh, we were talking about this. So, I mean, I don't know if you got something to do with it, but I think it's been two weeks. Yeah. Yeah.
Just maybe you have.
Yeah, you should, I don't think he's there, but I've heard, been trading it for two weeks.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, you'll all, right?
Right, yeah. So, uh, at least, uh, obviously, we're gonna open a lot of them. But, yeah, so, we really, 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 really. Yeah. Hey, good evening, uh, planning board. This is Paul from Ashland Cable.
Hey, hi, Paul.
Hi. Just make sure you can hear me okay. We are all set here. We are streaming and here today, and we're ready to go live whenever we need to.
I think we have ready on right here, so. Yeah, I just don't get started, so, um. Paul, why don't you go ahead and start, start your break?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Ashland Planning Board for May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, on our agenda tonight, we have three public hearings, including one hundred Chestnut Street, five-one Pond Street, and, um, three-twenty Pond Street, which is, um, the Mazi Restaurant. Um, and then, obviously, some, always some administrative matters as well. Um, we will be starting this meeting, um, with a continued public hearing of one hundred Chestnut Street Site Plan Review. This is being continued from May twelfth. And Peter, if you could, um, please, let us know where we are on that and what we're doing this evening.
Sure, so, uh, thank you, uh, Trish. Uh, so I can give, uh, the board a quick update from our last meeting. Uh, so at the last meeting, indoor, um, I can tell you that the applicant, um, uh, based on development, they have submitted, uh, civil drawings and, uh, a swimwater plan. Uh, and please know that that has been sent over to a third-party engineer, uh, for review. Obviously, G, uh, it's been used for a long time. So, that happened this week, and so that is underway. However, tonight, uh, the main discussion, um, excuse me. The main discussion is going to focus around the piece of land indoor, the property, that this, uh, proposal is to be built upon. So, uh, so, rewinding a little bit to, uh, this past, um, excuse me, I have to let a couple people in. Uh, so rewinding the clock back to, uh, this past September, there was an A and R plan submitted, uh, by the owner of the property, which would be McFafford Company, uh, and it was reviewed by us. Uh, as a town, we had some questions on it regarding the area. And we've asked them to kind of, uh, to take a look at, not to take a look, but to prove the numbers. Uh, and so, um, McFafford Company, along with, uh, the attorney on call, uh, Mr. Jeff Roloff, uh, has been studying this, um, land area matter. Um, and, uh, and so, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff. Uh, however, uh, very quickly, I just wanted to introduce Lisa Lee, Town Council for the Town of Ashland. Um, she is on the call, so you've been helping me with this issue regarding the, um, the A and R indoor, the Approval Not Required Plan, which, um, rearranges indoor, cuts the site, uh, manipulates the property that the McFafford Company is looking to sell to the McFafford Company. Excuse me, Baystone Development, uh, represented tonight by, uh, Mr. Roy McDowell and his two sons. Um, so at this point, uh, without further ado, I'm gonna hand it over to Jeff Roloff, uh, who is representing the McFafford Company, the owner of the property. And Jeff is gonna walk us through his calculations, uh, regarding the plan, a lot area, and how this, uh, qualifies within our bylaws, so.
Peter, just.
Yep.
Just one question logistically, like, um, item, the item on, on the agenda we were on is the continued public hearing, and then number three is the approval not required. Is this all, uh, good for that process? Or do we have to do one and then the other?
You should stop, or you should either do one or the other, but not together, Tricia, so.
Yeah.
Um, either, yeah.
I had, I had just went by the agenda, and two was continued public hearing, so what, what do we need to do with that? Have I officially opened it already? And so I need.
Officially reopened the talk book. Excuse me, Lisa.
Yeah, so I, I think you did officially say you were gonna start the Site Plan Review Public Hearing.
Hmm.
Um, and I don't know if that's actually gonna happen or not. Um, and then you should go into the A and R, or if there's actually not, if you're not, if you don't have anything to talk about on Site Plan Review, you can just continue it to the next meeting or whatever you're gonna do, but you do need to have a delineation between the two.
Okay, so let's, let's review that first. Um, Todd McDowell, did you have a comment?
Through, through the chair, we did just have a couple of quick things to show you regarding the Site Plan Review, just the solar layout, and a couple of just, uh, schematic designs for the bus shelter, just to see if we're heading in the right direction. Um, it should be real quick, and then we can move to the A and R, if that's okay with you.
Well, we do know that those things are on our list of, that are going to Design Review Committee. Um, I'll take a survey from the board. Do we wanna take a quick look at those before we move forward?
Tr- Tricia, are, are those, are the items that going to, that are going to the design review? Uh, ha- have those been kind of enumerated?
They are on the list of things that we talked about.
Yeah.
That would go to the Design Review Committee. Is that, that's right? I'm correct in that, right, Peter?
That's correct.
Okay.
I, I mean, I guess I, I did see, I think Emma just sent us the letter that would go to Design Review literally minutes before the meeting. Um, I agreed with the letter. I mean, if, if that's kind of what we're talking about, I do think it's appropriate to get that letter going to. It, it seems consistent with our prior discussions.
Yeah, and I believe it's already on the agenda for the Design Review Committee. So it seems to me we sent it that way, and maybe we should let it go that way with it, the, um, Select Board. Oh, sorry. I'm a little messed up right now. Is the Planning Board in agreement with that?
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Um.
I can, um, question about the other stuff that was submitted that's going to our third-party consultant. What, what's the timeframe for turnaround on that?
Uh, I would like to get it back, I typically would like to get it back before the next meeting. Uh, we have sent over three site plans, uh, and so they're working three a year. Um, McDonald's Site Plan, which obviously is not here tonight. Then obviously, the Site Plan for five-one Pond Street, uh, has been sent, uh, for the review. Um, sometimes, there's obviously a back and forth between engineers, if you're getting kind of calculation, um, number discrepancies, but that typically takes about ten, ten to, ten to fourteen days.
And they give, uh, like a synopsis to the Planning Board along the way? Okay.
There'll be a report that's issued to, to the planning board.
Thank you. So, Peter, do you need to request the continuance from the applicant?
Uh, before, before we do that, on the site, or I'm, I'm assuming we're still talking about the site review, right? Um, I do have kind of a follow-up point to that, because in, in looking at um, the seventeen-page letter from, um, the McFafford Companies on the, um, the second item on our agenda, there were some, uh, points of data in there that I think do relate to the Site Plan Review, and I, and I thought it would be helpful to ask a couple of questions of, um, of Council for McFafford about that, and specifically, I'm curious, because that does pertain to Site Review, at least the question that I had. Um, and that was on page nine of the letter from, uh, from Council. There is mention of the twenty-one thousand square feet of commercial space. Um, and I wanted to ask where that came from. That mention.
Uh, so, Attorney Roloff, do you have an answer for that, please?
Uh, yeah, I can, uh, respond to that. Thank you, uh, Jeff Roloff's outside counsel to McFafford and its affiliates, owners of the underlying land here. Um, so the twenty-one thousand, let's see, page nine, let me just see the reference. That square.
Yep. Page nine, first full paragraph, section four, um, you outline the Site Plan Approval um, that mentions the three buildings, including the twenty-one thousand square feet. Um, and I'm curious kind of your position as to where that twenty-one thousand square feet comes from, and the position of McFafford Companies as to that twenty-one thousand square feet of commercial space.
Yeah, that's fine. So, um, that relates to a Site Plan for a mixed-use, um, project that was approved by the Planning Board in two thousand and six. Um, I can show you, if you want, the, the plan. It, it was in my materials, um, but, um, this mixed-use project that you're seeing now is basically a revised version of a mixed-use project uh, that was previously approved, two thousand and six. That project had twenty-one thousand square feet of commercial space in it. It wasn't driven by any, um, zoning bylaw requirements. It was just, happened to be the way that they had allocated the space in the Site Plan at that time. Uh, it also had residential units associated with it, and, um, again, I'm happy to show you that plan if you, if you haven't had.
I mean, I, I absolutely think that's relevant to our Site Plan Review. There's been a little bit of controversy, I think, relative to the one, twenty-one thousand square feet, and I absolutely would love to hear every little piece of data you have on that, that particular approved plan and the twenty-one thousand square feet. So, this would seem like a perfect opportunity, because you're here.
Okay, I mean, our, our legal opinion as to where that comes from and whether or not it has any relevance to the current project is, uh, in two thousand and six, it was just, one, it was an aspect of the project that McFafford had presented and secured an approval for, uh, at that time. Uh, the twenty-one thousand square foot figure was also evaluated by the Zoning Board in two thousand and eight, because the, uh, two thousand and two covenant here had a requirement that said to McFafford, you can't build more than fifty percent of the multifamily units until you've built fifty percent of the commercial or mixed-use space. And one of the questions presented to the ZBA at that time in two thousand and eight was whether that meant, uh, they needed to build fifty percent of the entire project, or fifty percent of the approved commercial space. And the conclusion that the ZBA came to was that they had to build at least fifty percent of the commercial space. That was the decision that led to McFafford building the three commercial units, uh, buildings that are after property currently. Uh, that was probably two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten time period. Um, more recently, as you, I, I'm not sure when you got onto the board, but, uh, there was a prior buyer of the property, prospective buyer of the property here. Um, the question was presented, uh, to the board and, and to us at that time as to whether or not the commercial space allocation from the two thousand and six Site Plan was somehow binding on a, you know, a modified mixed-use project. My conclusion was that it wasn't. Um, we reviewed that, uh, question with, uh, I think it was with Peter and Lisa at the time. This was probably one or two years ago now. And we all agreed that the two thousand and six Site Plan was not binding with respect to the allocation. So, you know, there were, and there's nothing in the zoning bylaw that mandated a twenty-one thousand square foot commercial component. So, currently, you know, you're looking at a, at a modified build-out, same area of the site, but a modified build-out, and there's no mandatory or legal requirement that that, this build-out include a twenty-one thousand square foot, uh, commercial component.
Thank you for explaining, um, how, how that came to be. Thank you.
Um, are there any more questions that would be pertinent? Um, that maybe we should be answering in the moment before we continue this public hearing in order to discuss the NAR, um, in more detail? All right, can, so Peter, do you need to request that continuance?
Yeah, so they, uh, just drew you the chair. I would like to ask that, uh, based on development, uh, Roland Todd, um, do we agree upon a continuance to the next planning board meeting, uh, which is going to be the first meeting in June for the Site Plan Approval?
We do.
Yeah, and obviously, just please follow up with that email. So, uh, Tricia, I think we can just take a, uh, roll call vote to continue the Site Plan Approval process. Uh, the Site Plan Approval Review to the next planning board meeting, uh, which is going to be on, excuse me, June ninth.
Anna, do you wanna take a crack at that motion? If you don't mind?
Sure, um, I make a motion to continue the Site Plan Review of one hundred Chestnut Street. And I'm sorry, Peter, you said to June?
June ninth.
June ninth.
No, I'll second that, Tricia.
All right, we will have a roll call vote, starting with Deepa.
I think you're muted, Deepa.
Deepa, good day.
Anna Tuskmanitzky, aye.
Marcella, aye.
And there's you, Kate.
And Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is continued till June ninth. All right, now the next item on the agenda is, uh, item three, one hundred Chestnut Street Approval Not Required. So, anything else that needs to be said before you return it over to, uh, to Jeff?
Um, uh, no, I think I, I covered all the bases that I, too, when I apologized for jumping ahead. Uh, I know that was a big discussion, so, uh.
Might, you might wanna pull up the plan, though, I think, right?
Yeah, exactly. If you're, if it, if I'm able to, I'd like to show a few documents, and one of those, I would start with the A and R plan, so if I can share my screen.
Jeff, I just made you a co-host.
Okay, thank you. So are you ready for me to?
I am ready for you to start, uh, your presentation and review of the topic.
All right. Let me just get it on the screen here. Okay, thank you again. Uh, so this isn't a public hearing, it's a public meeting on a, a, a request or an application for endorsement of an Approval Not Required Plan. The plan is in front of you, uh, here, and let me just walk through, um, the different pieces of it. So currently, all of this area in between Queen Isabelle Way, America Boulevard, um, and Chestnut Street is, uh, really two, uh, existing lots, as defined on the most recent A and R plan from two thousand and eleven. This corner lot was created to accommodate the three commercial buildings that we were just talking about, um, owned by one McFafford affiliate. The remainder of the lot, uh, was owned by another McFafford affiliate, uh, Lot Two A Two. Um, and parts of it, a large part of it, has been built out with multifamily, uh, units, and, uh, the land surrounding those units has been dedicated through the condominium statute to the condominium Freedom Village. Um, the A and R that's being presented here would create lot lines, um, across the front portion of the property, creating Lot A, six-point-one-six acres. That would be to accommodate the Baystone project, the mixed-use project that you're reviewing. Um, the Lot B is a non-billable lot, and it's designated as such, uh, on the plan. And it's an area that, um, as I understand it, is gonna be left undeveloped and part of an open space area for the Freedom Village condominium. And then Lot C is the land that's already been dedicated to Freedom Village condominium, and the area, the acres there are six-point-seven-four acres. So this plan, a very similar version of this plan, um, was presented in the fall. And a question came up as to whether or not Lot C had sufficient area under the zoning bylaw to, uh, to legally, uh, contain the multifamily units constructed there. And specifically, let me just turn to the zoning bylaw quickly. Eight-point-six-point-six-one and eight-point-six-point-six-two were the two paragraphs that came into question. Uh, eight-six-six-one provides an, an lot area provision for individual lots within the Wildwood Mixed Use Special District, uh, requiring forty thousand square feet. And then Paragraph Two provides a separate area requirement. Um, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it's basically one long sentence followed by a second sentence. And the first sentence begins, "In Area A only, non-senior residential dwellings will require a minimum lot area, not less than five thousand square feet per dwelling unit, plus one thousand square feet per bedroom, for a maximum of two bedrooms." And then it goes on, uh, to, to prescribe, uh, further requirements. And what I think through is sideways in the fall was this reference to lot area, um, which is a defined term in the zoning bylaw. I, let, let me make this a little bigger for you. Um, a defined term in the zoning bylaw, and the question was whether or not this five thousand square feet, and these are all two-bedroom units, so one thousand per bedroom, so in the end, seven thousand square feet per dwelling, whether that applies to the Lot C that we're proposing or presenting on the A and R plan. If it did, Lot C wouldn't provide sufficient area. Our initial response to that was, it doesn't apply to individual lots within Area A. It never has, and never was intended to. Um, and this is basically a density provision within Lot A, and not a, not an area requirement for individual lots. That's covered by eight-six-six-one. Uh, Lisa's preliminary response to that was, she wasn't convinced. Uh, you know, the reference to lot area led her to, uh, opine, I think initially, that this was applicable to the Lot C area. And if you apply that seven thousand square foot requirement, times the number of units here, you would need more, you would need to retain more land area there for those units. So rather than sparring over that issue at that time, um, we withdrew the application for A and R endorsement. And, um, McFafford, and that was when I got involved, and McFafford basically retained me to get a better handle on the history here and sort of pull something more comprehensive together to address the issue. Because obviously, it's a significant issue. It's also a significant, it would be a significant difference in the development of this area uh, as compared to how it has been presented for, you know, approximately twenty years now. So, um, we withdrew that application. I spent some time going through town files, um, as well as McFafford files, interviewing, um, some of the people at McFafford and former employees. Uh, Jim McLaughlin, in particular, who was an engineer with McFafford, uh, for years. Uh, he isn't currently, but he's still around. He was involved with the adoption of the, uh, two thousand and two zoning provisions, the negotiation of the covenant. Um, and he sort of led me to, to the, the, sort of the documents and, and the history here that, um, he thought would help us to illustrate what these provisions were really intended to do. So, uh, after going through these documents, I pulled together this memo, and I assume you've all had a chance to at least see it. Uh, I know it's been provided to you, and I just wanted to pull it on the screen. I'm not gonna walk through this memo. It's obviously, if you've taken a look at it, it's pretty lengthy. Um, I, I wanted to just show you, though, that if you pull up the PDF version of it, you would see these tabs, all the various exhibits that were attached to it. So, uh, what I did was I walked through the, an overview of my review of the legislative history back in two thousand and two, two thousand and one and two thousand and two, as well as the post-adoption permitting history, um, with reference to certain documents that I wanted to provide to you so that, uh, you would have a chance to review those yourselves. Thirty-six exhibits attached to this. So, um, in the end, I think it's very compelling, uh, in demonstrating that eight-six-six-two, which had been, um, it was re-codified at one point. It, it was originally adopted with different numbering, but we'll refer to it as eight-six-six-two. Eight-six-six-two was never intended to be a requirement for, uh, individual lot areas within Area A. Um, what I think the history demonstrates here is that the intent was to prob- provide a density requirement for multifamily units to be constructed within the residential portion of Area A. And that same paragraph defines that residential portion as being seventy-five percent of Area A, or up to seventy-five percent of Area A. Um, I'm confident that, uh, the, the conclusion that I've articulated here is, is the right conclusion. Um, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to review it, and if you want me to walk through it, I'm prepared to spend five or so minutes just hitting some of the highlights, uh, unless, uh, Madeline Chair, you don't want me to do that, um, but I'd be happy to do it if, if you, if you prefer that.
All right, I think, um, I think this is the right context for that, so, um, I think it would help for you to go through it.
Okay, so let me do that quickly.
Oh, Anna, do you have a question?
I'm sorry, can I just ask a really quick question? You had the whole section on the screen before. Could, could you, before we kind of go through the memo, I did review it carefully, but.
Yep.
Could, could I ask a very, very quick question, just to kind of clarify what you're trying to say?
Yes.
So, are, are you essentially saying that the first paragraph, Lot Area definitions, you're say, you're saying that paragraph is defining a lot as Area C or B or A? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, what I'm saying is that with respect to the individual lots, so.
So each lot is like, yep.
Paragraph one speaks to, provides an area requirement for individual lots within the district. So for our A and R plan, the individual lots would be Lots A, Lots B, and Lot C.
Understood, and so.
Okay, Lot B wouldn't meet the forty thousand square foot requirement, because, that, that's why we've got it designated as non, non-billable. Paragraph two. Paragraph two, in my opinion, provides a density requirement related to Area A. Um, and the whole goal here, that, that, the legislative history shows that what they were trying to do here was to define the boundaries of the area, the portion of Area A where multifamily buildings could be built by, just by percentage of Area A, seventy-five percent is the amount that they chose. Um, and then, and within that seventy-five percent portion, there, uh, there was a certain density prescribed here, and, and for these two-bedroom, uh, units that we've built, that would be seven thou- seven thousand square feet per unit. Um, and as I discuss in my memo, if you then go back to the two thousand and two covenant, which contemplated the build-out of three hundred and twenty-eight units, if you do the math on that, three hundred and twenty-eight units times seven thousand square feet, the square foot number that you come up to is just shy of seventy-five percent of Area A.
Understood, that, that's all I needed. I, I'm, I'm good, and, and I'm comfortable with your interpretation, and I did read the memo, but, you know, go ahead and go through, um, the memo.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick then, um. Okay. I'll be, I'll be quick then. Um, so just quickly, that, that was the summary of the conclusion. This is the memo. I'm just going to quick walk through it and just hit the highlighted sections here. Um, this is just me explaining that this eight six six two, in, in my view, is a density provision, extending over the seventy-five percent area. Um, I get into the calculation that I just walked you through, so I won't repeat that. Um, I did spend some time providing the legal standards associated with interpreting zoning bylaws. I'm not going to reiterate those standards here. Um, the language of eight six six two, um, basically what I'm saying in this section is that phrase lot area standing alone sort of has meaning to it. Um, but once you drop it into all the other language around it within paragraph two, it's not so clear anymore and doesn't drive the interpretation. Um, at that point, you really need to look to what was intended by the, the paragraph generally. And you need to correlate it with the legislative history, the, the two thousand two covenant, and then the permitting history that followed it. And I referenced the permitting history in my memo. Uh, I make this point not to, um, not to argue that the town by rendering a different interpretation, um, is bound by those prior decisions, because I know there's an unstoppable issue there. The point of referencing all the, the history is that it was always understood that this was a density provision and not a, a, a provision that provided for an individual lot area. That was how it was always interpreted, um, and that just reflects the intent of the paragraph. Um, so getting to page five of my memo, this is just a figure from, um, the initial planning efforts to try to figure out how this area of town should be developed. Faford gave the town some money to hire Fields and Thomas. They came up with some concepts. This concept two was one of those concepts. And in it, it's hard to see here. But in it, um, what they did was they defined, they, they actually proposed lot lines around different uses. They didn't, they weren't contemplated individual lots to separate condominium associations or anything like that. It was basically, the, the conceptual approach was to find use areas and then come up with, uh, an acceptable density within the use area. So that's consistent with our theme. Uh, going back to the memo, so that was two thousand one. In early two thousand and two, the planning board got, a committee was, uh, formed and the planning board members started setting up working sessions and, and there's back and forth communication between planning board members, the town planner, Faford representatives, and they started exchanging draft zoning bylaws for this area, uh, for the Wildwood Mixed Use District, uh, including Area A. And one of the things I thought was really, uh, relevant is this memo from, uh, February. Uh, it was a draft of the zoning by law. The draft was dated February twenty eighth, two thousand two. The notes on it were by the planning board chair at the time, Mary Hawke. Um, and I just want to zoom in on this because this kind of, this explains where that lot area reference came from within paragraph two. So her comments are in italics and what she said on the draft, and I did include that as an exhibit, but um, the excerpt here, she made the comment that most mixed use district zoning has no lot area requirement. She made that comment and then immediately after saying that, came up with this language proposing a density provision for Area A or for residential units, areas containing residential units uh, within the mixed use district. And she used the phrase lot area there. And it, it was very obvious that she, she didn't actually mean it to be an individual lot area as was the, how it was explained in the first paragraph. She really meant it to, to be an area requirement that spanned, um, the, the district. The, it, it, that spanned the residential area, the area that was going to be dealt, developed for residential. That lot area phrase, which sort of gave us pause in the fall, was then carried forward through all the drafts that follow. But the author of that phrase is the one that also said, there usually aren't lot area requirements within mixed use districts. So I thought that was compelling. That was just one tiny piece of it. Um, a couple of months later, April, there was, there are these meeting minutes that we found. Um, and what the board was doing was starting to, to try to identify how much of, of Area A should be devoted to different uses. As of April two thousand two, they were contemplating seventy-five percent of the area for residential use, five percent open space, twenty percent for commercial. They were debating what kind of density there should be. They were looking back to the, the, um, the workman's circle, uh, part of town that was already under construction as a model. And they were coming to the conclusion, primarily for financial reasons, that they should allow a greater density here. So you can see the language evolving as you go through the history that I provide here. Um, in the end, sorry, I just skipped past the, uh, in the end, they got to a final version of the zoning by law, which is the version that was adopted. Um, and they, when they presented it to the town in October of twenty, uh, they should say two thousand and two. When they presented the zoning by law to the town in two thousand and two, they also entered into a development agreement or a covenant with Faford. And in that, um, you know, there were a lot of provisions and requirements in it, and a copy is included as exhibit twenty-one. But among them was the provision that, um, a maximum of five hundred and twenty-eight residential, that's residential units, uh, could be constructed in Area A comprised of three hundred and twenty-eight multifamily dwelling units and two hundred multifamily dwelling units within mixed use buildings. So those were the caps that they had come up with. And they correlate almost exactly with the density provisions that they ultimately adopted. So again, if you take that, that three hundred and twenty-eight unit figure that was folded into the development agreement, correlates almost exactly with seventy-five percent calculation. If you do that seven thousand square foot, if you apply that seven thousand square foot area requirement to the seventy-five percent area that they've identified for residential use. Uh, so none of that was by mistake, right? It was all contemplated. There were concept plans being presented at that time. And ultimately, ultimately, that's what was built. So the next section of my memo goes on to the permitting history. Uh, after the zoning by law was adopted. And through the course of the permitting, um, this development was su- subject to a, a lot of review over and over again. The, the town homes were built out in seven phases. Every phase had to go through a site plan review process with the planning board. Um, there were reporting requirements to the selectmen and the, the planning board. And so along as this development was unfolding and, and proceeding, um, it was a, it was a joint effort. The town was very closely tuned in to what was being built here to ensure that it was being built pursuant to the, the development agreement and the zoning by law and the plan that they had all come up for, come up with for this area. Um, you know, right after the zoning by law was adopted, there was a development schedule provided by Faford, um, correlating with the three hundred and twenty, the development of three hundred and twenty-eight multifamily units. Um, in two thousand and six, the planning board approved the mixed use project along Chestnut Street. Let me just pull that up quickly since, um, you asked about that. Sorry, these are the, uh, other documents. This is the two thousand and six, and I, and I'm, I'm not sure if some of the folks newer to the scene here were even aware that this, uh, approval had happened. So this is from two thousand and six. It was a modified site development plan approved by the planning board. And you can see, uh, it shows the bill, the town homes that were already built or the multifamily units already built. And then up front along Chestnut Street, that basically the same area that Basestone's proposing to build now, um, was the subject of a, a proposal at that time. And it was a public hearing process. The plan showed a future lot line, not exactly, but basically in the same spot that we're showing in now. Um, and again, that's, that's carried forward. So that plan was adopted. Um, and it was always contemplated that these homes were going to continue to be built out within these other areas. Um, there were no secrets and they also knew that this mixed use area was going to be carved out um, for the purposes of the commercial and mixed use, uh, development. Uh, going further into the history in two thousand and eight, as I mentioned, there was a question about how to interpret the covenant. Um, during that process, I was involved with that process. Uh, there was a lot of focus put on the development agreement, the zoning by law, the site plan review that had been approved in two thousand and six. And not at any point in time did anyone ever suggest that, um, that the eight six six two provision, uh, somehow applied to individual lots, uh, within the, within the Area A portion of the Wildwood District. Going further into time, as things were being built out, twenty fifteen, the planning board approved the site plan for the final phase of the multifamily units. That's the Freedom Village phase. This is an excerpt from that plan showing the building locations that were proposed and approved. That's where they were ultimately constructed. This plan also showed the future lot line. And it showed the footprints of the pla- of the site plan, just as background, the footprint of the buildings that had been approved in two thousand and six by the planning board for the mixed use project. So that was twenty fifteen. At the same time, there was a, an overall concept plan, uh, presented to the planning board that was also referenced in the planning board's site plan approval decision. And that's this plan here. Um, I can show you a bigger version of that. So this plan was presented to the planning board in twenty fifteen and was just a, a later iteration of a concept plan that had been, uh, shown to town officials over the years as things were unfolding. But this plan very clearly shows, um, that the boundaries of the Freedom Village area were going to be confined here and that the mixed use project would be, uh, present along Chestnut Street. The question after that, so that was twenty fifteen, was whether or not Faford was going to build that mixed use project or whether it was, was going to build something else. What I didn't include in my memo was that there were negotiations along, uh, that sort of came up and were abandoned or, or failed a few times to replace the mixed use area with multifamily units completely. Um, there were, I think, a couple zoning by law changes that were either presented to town meeting and denied or they were discussed with the planning board and the decision was made not to present them. So, um, the mixed use project was kind of in limbo, uh, as of twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Sorry, in twenty nineteen, exhibit thirty-five, you'll see it, an approval decision from the planning board where, um, the town was contemplating some change, some zoning changes here that Faford wasn't totally comfortable with. So they started the process that the statute provides for, for freezing the zoning for your property. And what a landowner can do is they can file a preliminary subdivision plan, follow that within seven months with a definitive subdivision plan. And if they get that approved, ultimately, they freeze the zoning, uh, that's in place on the date of the filing of the preliminary plan. So in February, or it was probably earlier in twenty nineteen, Faford started a process for, uh, freezing the zoning uh, by filing a preliminary plan. The board held a public hearing on that and ultimately approved the plan. And these are excerpts from that plan. Uh, larger versions are included in my package. But basically what we, what we presented in that plan was a lot line here, right across the back of the mixed use area, similar to what we're proposing now, not exactly the same, but similar. Um, and a roadway extending into this. And there, there was never an intention to build that out. It was, again, it was, the purpose of this filing was to freeze the zoning. Ultimately, the zoning by law changes weren't adopted, so Faford never followed through on this. But I do think it's important to understand that the planning board did approve this preliminary plan. They had scrutinized it. They raised certain issues that tied into the covenant and ultimately they approved it. Again, ne- never at any point in time, um, sort of questioning whether or not that eight six six two provision uh, would render these homes, uh, unlawful because that individual lot didn't meet the, uh, square footage calculation provided for in that paragraph. Um, so that's it. These are just listed exhibits. Um, and again, I'm, I'm comfortable with the interpretation. Our hope is that if you agree with the interpretation, um, after, uh, discussing it, uh, that you would endorse this plan and we can get past this issue. Thank you. I'm happy to keep my screen up or to stop sharing. Uh, Madam Chair, it's your, up to you.
Um, thank you. I'll, I'll let that decision actually up to Peter. Peter, who do you think, um, needs to weigh in next on this?
Oh, uh, I'm, I'm happy to, to speak a little bit, but obviously, uh, Lisa and me are, uh, town councilors. Um, so I'd like to give Lisa the opportunity if, uh, if none of the planning board members have any, uh, questions, uh, right up to that.
Yeah, we can ask first. Any questions from the planning board, from the planning board on what's been presented so far? If, if no, if no, we'll continue and obviously come back to more questions at any time throughout. Okay, um, go ahead, Peter.
Oh, I'd just like to state that I was, you know, working on this, uh, this A and R plan, uh, which obviously, uh, turning the roll off and, and, and town councilors, Lisa and me. Um, I have reviewed all the plans as well and, and, and the town, the timing of all the plans kind of worked out. I, I agree, uh, with Jeff's, um, attorney roll off memo. Um, and I have, you know, tried to fact check, um, to best my ability, um, Jeff's calculations, um, and, uh, how it came to that. And I think that was kind of outlined in a follow-up email which was sent to the planning boards out, which I believe has the date of May tenth, um, and that also had an attachment on that. Um, and that is just concerned as well, um, you know, it kind of runs through, um, each building, all the buildings and all the phases of this property. Obviously, I always, I, I restate and recall this property Phase Seven of the building in the heart is. Um, but just as a whole, uh, and not too late, um, all the calculations seem like they, uh, they work out. Uh, and, and this was always the interpretation of the town, uh, dating back to the execution of the civic covenant, uh, back in oh one.
Right. So, um, at this point, um, should we turn it over to Attorney Mead?
Uh, please.
Um, sure. So I, I won't take very long, um, Madam Chair, but, um, I, you know, Peter and I brought this issue up originally last fall when this, um, when the original A and R plan came in, um, because we were looking at the lot area definition and the overall zoning. Um, and it was the, to say that the Wildwood Mixed Use District was, um, unclear uh, is to, uh, put it mildly. So we insisted that, um, that clarity be brought to the interpretation of the zoning. Um, you know, typically, the, the law is when you interpret zoning or interpret any by law or statute, um, if it's clear, you can't, you know, you don't go behind the by law and find out the legislative history. Uh, but given the, the use of the terms individual lots and lot area uh, throughout this section of the zoning, it deserved, um, to have a legislative history brought to bear on it. And it is appropriate to look at the legislative history, uh, when the, uh, interpretation or the zoning language itself is vague. Um, I can, I agree with Jeff's, um, ultimate conclusion here. I think it was very clear when they added the term individual lots into the, uh, into the Wildwood Mixed Use District when they were defining the actual individual lots for single family homes. That's a clear delineation for me versus lot area, which was clearly referring to the larger areas like Area A. Um, and for me, um, when we take that information along with the calculation of the seventy-five percent equaling almost exactly the three hundred and twenty-eight units, coupled with the approvals of the planning board and the various plans marching forward, um, I'm quite confident that this was the original intent and the, the plan that's before you uh, meets the frontage and area requirements as required under the, uh, A and R.
Thank you. Um, Peter, anything else before I open this up to questions from the board?
You know, I think, I'm all set. I just want to reiterate, obviously, um, we were skeptical and, and I, and I believe with Faford Company and Attorney Rolloff has, you know, they've worked hard and, and they've proven, you know, they've proven, um, their stance, you know, through the math, through the calculations. And so with that burden being proved, you know, I feel comfortable with, um, moving ahead.
Okay, on that note then, um, I'll open it up to questions, um, from the board to, um, uh, to, um, Attorney Rolloff or Attorney Mead, um, or Peter, if you have a, a question for him.
I mean, I think my, my only question, I, I absolutely agree with, with the, the point of the memo. I think my only question for, for counsel is, um, for Fafford's council, is what is your position as far as the significance of this for the current project before us?
Yeah, thank you. I think the only significance is this, the lot delineation that we're proposing in the A and R is it's a really important part of being able to convey to Baystone or whoever develops the mixed use project ultimately, an area of land that they control, one that's not shared. And you have to, it would be a very complicated situation if you were to build a mixed use project on land that was co-owned by a residential condominium association. It would confuse things in a way that most buyers just wouldn't be interested in even getting into that. So this land would end up sitting idle for probably many more years to come. We weren't able to create the lot that we always anticipated creating and devoting it to the mixed use project. So that's the importance of being able to get this A and R plan endorsed. We can then record it and then reference it in the transaction that would convey it to whoever it is that's going to build the mixed use project. We hope that's based on.
And the specifics of what you're seeking is the removal of that lot line between Lot A and the lot that has the existing commercial space buildings?
Yes, that's, so within the mixed use area, Lot A of 6.16 acres, you can, that's right. We're looking to eliminate that dotted line in the middle, which is a current property line. And then we're also looking to delineate through the boundaries of Lot C, delineate on the A and R plan the, exactly the same area that's actually already been dedicated to the Freedom Village condominium. And maybe I should just point out quickly on that note. So when the Freedom Village condominium was set up, the master deed, I do reference this in my memo, but the master deed contemplated that approximately five plus or minus acres would be dedicated to the multifamily, to the Freedom Village condominium. Through this plan, it would be a little bit more than that, actually. But I just, it would end up being 6.74 acres being conveyed over to them in addition to this Lot B area in the central area. I just wanted to point that out so that you could be comfortable knowing that this proposed lot delineation doesn't conflict in any way with the contemplated land for the Freedom Village area. It's actually giving them a little more land than what they always anticipated that they would get.
So the May 18th, 2022 plan, the A and R plan of May 18th is what you're proposing? Those specific divisions, right?
Yes, that's correct, yep.
And those divisions reflect what we have been presented with for the previous months regarding this project?
Yeah, these lines, yes, these lines are the same as the ones that were presented to you in October, the one that we withdrew, yes. The only change is, I'll just mention, we had called Lot B parcel B. And I didn't understand why we did that. So I suggested we go back to Lot B, so we had a Lot A, Lot B, Lot C. And then we elaborated on a couple of the notes. We added Note 6 just to reference the master deed. Because I wanted to make clear that this delineation of Lot C correlates with the land dedicated to the condominium as reflected in the documents that are now referenced in Note 6. So separate from those changes, it's the same plan that you saw before.
Okay.
And just for some clarity, what is Lot B as far as? I'm trying to understand the vision here relative to Lot B as well, kind of. What's the history of that particular chunk of land? Why is it undisturbed? What's, give us a little context for what Lot B is all about.
I believe in the site plan that was approved for the Freedom Village area showed this as an open space area. So what we're proposing to do here is just, it hasn't yet been dedicated to the condominium. It's still owned by the Fafford entity. And by carving it out here, it just gives us an area of land that can then be referenced in the event Fafford deeds it over to the condominium or dedicates it to the condominium. But whether it's dedicated or not, under the site plan that was approved by the planning board for the Freedom Village condominium, that area was supposed to be unbuilt on. And so what we're presenting here with this phrase, not a buildable lot, not a building lot, we're basically adhering to that requirement, that it be unbuilt.
And is it something that you are agreeing is essentially open space? Is there a commitment to keep it that way?
I, I'm not as involved in that part of the history. I'm not sure, maybe Peter, you can answer that because I haven't been involved in those issues.
I can jump in. So as I review the site plan for the Freedom Village, there is dedicated open space on lot in that parcel. It is a landscaped manicured, shared area or shared path for open space for that condo association. So that was always dedicated and called out going back to the site plan for that phase, which was the last developed phase of the Village of America.
So it still belongs to the Fafford Companies, but is dedicated to to the condo associations?
I think it was approved as open space by the Fafford Company in the site plan that created that village. And now Lot B will be turned over to that condo association for their ownership and control and.
So is that happening independent of this A and R plan? Or is it something that we have jurisdiction to address and confirm?
That would be independent of this plan. The only thing this plan does is it allows you, so let's say Fafford were to dedicate that area to the condominium. This plan, once it's registered, once it's recorded at the registry, provides a clear reference point. So what the deed would say or the dedication would say, you know, Fafford is hereby dedicating Lot B unplanned by such and such a date, recorded at such and such a place. The A and R plan itself doesn't result in any land transfers. But it gives you a vehicle for identifying a land area. So when you decide to dedicate the land or when you decide to convey the land, you've got a document that's been endorsed and recorded at the registry that facilitates that transfer. My understanding is Lot B is going to, if this is endorsed and recorded, that Lot B is going to be dedicated over to the Freedom Village condominium. And that's my understanding, but again, I'm not, I'm not as close, I'm not close to those, that dynamic. I haven't been asked to get involved with it. But the A and R endorsement doesn't accomplish it, but it does facilitate it. The planning board has separate, a separate role to enforce its site plan approval. If there were ever some issue on that question of what Lot B is being used for, the planning board's authority comes from the site plan that it approved for the Freedom Village condominium.
Maybe I can, Madam Chair, through you, maybe I can provide a little clarity too. I think, okay, so I think Anna, when, how Fafford, when we did the, when we started to do the deed research into whether the A and R, how the A and R plan worked and whether the condominium association had enough land, it became clear to us, the Freedom Village condominiums, how Mr. Fafford laid them out was kind of in a phasing area. So first, he got approval of the site plan, which had, of course, the open space requirement in there. The site plan, of course, the board and the town and zoning cannot control ownership. But the site plan says you can have these buildings laid out in these particular areas, but there has to be this open space in the middle. So when Mr. Fafford started to develop the condominiums, he would do it piece by piece. And instead of carving off A and R pieces, he, each several units were different phases of the condominium master deed. And that condominium grew by phase as he conveyed out units and built new buildings. Until he built all of the buildings. And so the condominium master deed would take little pieces of that larger area and convey it or dedicate it to the condominium association. What he hasn't done yet, which sounds like it might be happening, is to now dedicate that open space area to the condominium association. Frankly, it doesn't matter and the board has no control over it so long as it stays as open space. He has no incentive to keep it because he's paying taxes on it. So, you know, the board's control is how is it used? If it's used for open space, that's consistent with the site plan. But that's kind of how that area developed. And I can understand why the open space hadn't been dedicated yet because he focused on dedicating the buildings as they were created.
But in any case, that lot is unbuiltable?
Correct. It doesn't meet any of the requirements.
Okay. All right, any other comments from members of the planning board? Okay.
I have a question, so it's unbuiltable and it's labeled as such, but is there a technicality that that could become buildable? Is there any way? Because I know you need frontage, et cetera, but is there land that could accomplish that?
Well, nothing could, even if it were dedicated to the condominium and therefore became part of a larger parcel that sort of pulled it out of its non-buildable status by itself. Nobody could go ahead and build anything on it without going to the planning board and getting a modified site plan approval. And given that the number of units that are out there, basically, is all that you can build within that 75% provision of 8662. I don't think, even if the condominium folks wanted to build another unit in there, they'd be able to do that. Because then they would, they would probably be exceeding that lot or the area requirement that applies to the 75% portion. So I think it's extremely unlikely, even if it were dedicated to the condominium, that anyone could build anything on it. If they did, it would come to the board.
Yeah, and the backstop is, even if they could, which I highly doubt that they could, they would have to come to this board to do it.
Right.
And that would also go against the original covenant, which is obviously the development agreement that really outlined that the entire property is a void. So there's a few backstops and I don't think that would be a possibility in the future.
And, you know, just to give context from my original question, the shape of it is a little awkward. The way, the elimination of that lot line creates this somewhat awkward kind of corner, if you will. So I was trying to understand what that little corner there is about, that little, almost like a, how is, you know, I'm trying to envision the significance of this to the current project and how the current project would utilize essentially that small little corner space right in the middle, right next to this open space.
Can we bring the plan back up?
Yes, you want me to bring the A and R plan up?
Yes, please.
Right, so I know it looks sort of awkward on a plan like this. In the field though, obviously, you don't see these lines. They're not delineated with such straight accuracy as you're seeing on this plan. I think it's just an open space area. I don't have an aerial in front of me. And then with respect to this area that you might be referring to here, you know, and how is Baystone going to use that? I think you're seeing that on their plans. I mean, their plans already sort of had hoped that they were going to ultimately secure this, you know, the 6.16 acre land area. And so as you look at their site plans, you'll see these boundaries on it. And you'll be able to tell what they're proposing to do there.
Actually, through the chair, this is Roy McDowell speaking. That area, basically that entire length, we're proposing doing screening trees for benefit of our neighbors.
So essentially, you're going to extend, you're going to extend the open space in that corner?
Well, it's not really open space per se, it's open in that there's nothing built on it, but it will be landscaped.
Would it be helpful to bring up a current site plans that we can compare the NAR plan to the current site plan?
Yeah, it's interesting. Roy, if you're okay with it, I can pull up the, let me just see what I've got for your plans. I've got a plan that's dated, looks like May 5th. Can I pull that up?
That's fine.
That's fine, yeah.
So do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so there you go. So you can see that they've got plantings, these are existing plantings that already exist along that same line.
No, those are new.
Oh, those are new, so you're proposing those, Roy?
Yes, we're proposing literally a screening line, the entire back property line.
All right, and then, so this black line here though, that correlates with the line on the A and R plan. And you can see what Roy's talking about there. There's vegetation that straddles that line as a buffer to the neighbors. And then they're well within the area. So obviously, this plan's oriented 90 degrees to the left of the other plan.
And I think this, my question somewhat spills over to the site plan review and we can talk about it more since we've continued it. I think that is helpful and I'll probably have some additional questions that relate to site plan review. I'm good, thank you.
And I should just point out, you can also see now, because this is a nice aerial of the area. So this is that little Lot B in the middle here. It's just a, it is an open space currently and the intention is to keep it that way.
Yep, I mean, I will put, I'm putting a footnote in my mind at least to come back to this idea because essentially what we're looking at is an open space that we're cutting somewhat, we're kind of quartering it with that division of border trees. And I think as a board, we may want to come back to that. Again, it's not related to this particular discussion now, but it's just opening up questions for me for later. Thank you.
All right, Peter, obviously, this is a different situation. Where do we go, where do we go from here on this? We have, we have had opportunity to ask questions. I don't believe there are any further questions.
Could take a, I'll pop in if you want, Madam Chair. So this is an A and R plan, it's not subject to a public hearing, as you know. And so it's up to the board to approve it or not, approve it if it meets the requirements. You can't really deny an A and R plan. So, but you still need to vote on it.
Okay. All right, I guess then I will just open it up for a general discussion from the board. Do we, does anyone have any concerns with this A and R plan that have not been addressed? Or that would like to be addressed more fully?
I mean, I think the memo is very strong in laying out the intention of the by law. I'm comfortable with interpretation presented. I think, I think that approval is the proper step at this point. And, you know, I found it insightful as far as the connection to the site plan review. And I think we need to come back and talk about open space a little bit more next time.
Yep, fair enough.
I agree with Anna that I think the explanation has been very clear. And law and regulations are obviously not my forte, but my forte. But I think the case has been made fairly well. And I do see that open space as a non-issue, in my view. It's very clear, non-developable. So I think, from my point of view, I think we should proceed to vote.
Okay. Any other final, final opportunity for questions or comments?
I have a comment. I don't know if I'm allowed to vote on this because I believe it was brought up when I wasn't a planning board member. And I don't know if that would be under like continuance, so.
Peter, that's your question?
So you are a new member of the planning board and, but in my eyes, you are, this is a new matter. It's a new application. And so therefore, yes, you are allowed to vote and sign the, and I will ask everyone who's voting to come into town hall and actually sign the A and R plan. But yes, you are allowed to vote on this as a separate matter. Do you concur, Lisa?
I agree, it's a separate matter from the site plan review, Kate. And so it's been presented for the first time tonight and you certainly have the right to vote on it.
So the fact that the NAR was submitted several months ago and withdrawn, that doesn't matter because we did not discuss it at that time?
That's correct, and it was withdrawn nonetheless. So even if it was this, yeah, right. So this is new, technically new, has never been presented before, first time presented. Kate's heard the whole thing.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Please. Uh, please.
Um, so I'll make the motion to approve the one hundred to one thirty Chestnut. Street A and R plan dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
And is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, um, roll call vote starting with Deepa.
Deepa Mangadi.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Matson, aye.
Captain Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is accepted and vote five zero zero. Thank you for. Making that as clear as possible, uh, to the board. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you.
Thank you to the board.
Thanks, thank you for your thoughtful review. Have a good day.
And Councilman, thank you for your time as well. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. It's nice to see everybody. Take care. Have a great weekend.
You too.
Let's get all applicants to, to provide such detailed documents.
Thank you.
All right, then.
Five oh one pond next. Should I disappear?
It is, it is, yes.
All right, I'm going to bow out. I'll see you all later.
All right, thank you.
Thanks to you.
All right, so next on our agenda is the continued public hearing for five oh one Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. This has been continued. From May twelfth and, um. As, as I've announced before, um, planning board member, um, Anna Tesmenitsky has, is recused from. Um, this public hearing because she has a direct abutter and so taking her place is Kevin McLean, our associate planning board member. Um, so Peter, where are we with five oh one?
So, uh, at the last meeting, uh, the, I can, uh, tell everybody is an update. Uh, five oh one Pond Street, um, uh, represented today by Ben, Ben Stevens and, and Matt Stevens. They have submitted, um, updated and revised, uh, civil plans and updated and revised storm water managing, uh, storm water manager report. Um, that has all been sent off for third party review. Tonight, uh, we are discussing the material that was submitted last Friday, uh, which has been circulated and posted on the planning board website. Um, and this is pertaining to the architectural renderings, um, and the, um. And the materials that was requested by the planning board, which showed the scale, uh, in, in, in reference to the existing buildings, uh, that are, uh, above the two properties. Which would be the senior, uh, member, uh, the senior, uh, health facility. Um, to be, I believe, northern property line and then to southern property line to be the, uh, mid-golf facility. And additionally, within the renderings, um, views from the rear of the building are also provided. Uh, and so tonight, uh, the application team is, I believe, going to, uh, walk through, um, updated renderings. Um, and, uh, views of the building. Uh, and so at this point, I think it's appropriate to hand it over to the application team. Uh, is the planning board, uh, only if the planning board has any other questions they want to, uh, ask before we. Um, dive into the, uh, continued public hearing.
All right, any questions from the planning board before they present the new, new materials? Right, we're good to go, Peter.
Okay, uh, so Ben, uh, Mr. Ben Stevens, I represent Trust Development, please. Uh, introduce yourself and your team and, uh, you can walk us through the submitted material.
Thank you, Peter. Um, everyone can hear me? Okay, um, tonight we have myself, Matt Stevens, Matt Marata and, uh. Ian Ramsey from, uh, Landscape Architect. And, um, we had one request, I think, um. The board asked us to update the sustainable, uh, sustainable development principles, which we did. That's included in the package. Um, and we asked, um, Matt, our, our architect to bring forward the designs to substantially complete. Um, schematic designs, which he has. And, uh, at that, I probably will, I think, uh, turn it over to Matt, who's got the, the, uh, package ready to go.
Thanks, Ben. Good evening. For record, Matt Rod with Icon Architecture. Um, Ben, the sustainability slide is first if you wanted to talk briefly about that.
Sure, um, basically, uh, the, um. The project itself, based upon what type of project it is, where it is, the, the use of infrastructure. Um, the development of a, of an abandoned site, if you will. Um, is pretty much, and the fact that twenty-five percent affordable and in a transit oriented area. And in an area that is, um, already has adequate infrastructure, both water sewer drainage, gas, electric and updated. Traffic and public transportation is in itself probably the most substantial. Uh, sustainability factor. Um, as we said in our previous meeting, we're committed to, uh. An all-electric building. Uh, we're preparing for a solar array system on the roof. Um, we have some innovative, uh. Irrigation, uh, rainwater capture systems being proposed. Um, Ian, our architect is, our, our landscape architect has worked hard on, um, some concerns from the designer review committee about. Um, the appropriate plantings, native species, um, more drought tolerant type, um, species. And of course, this will be, uh, an energy star, um. Building. We, by our nature, we do hot roof, iconeen insulation. Um, hardy plank, which is, I think, up to fifty percent recycled material is the exterior. Uh, we use now use Borrell trim, which is. Um, a sub- a substantial. Has a long lifetime relative to some of the vinyl products. Um, and is now up to seventy-five percent recycle, recycled material. And, um, so I think from location, product, uh, infrastructure. And building design, we're pretty much about is, uh, we're following the, the track as much as we could for a site. Um, like this and, and we, so Matt, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Ben. Um, so I'm going to run through some of this stuff really quickly because you've seen a lot of it before. Um, and we're going to get into some of the landscape before we get into the renderings. So I think it's important to look at the whole picture. Landscape site, and then we can dive into the architecture and the perspectives. Everyone knows where the project is. Everyone knows what's around the area. Uh, our site plan, we're again next to the residence of Valley Farm in Putzamore. We have a residential development behind us, a large hill, Pond Street. Uh, cunning site sections, you guys have seen this before, but again, um, looking, uh, going across the site along a Pond Street. Uh, showing the building in relation to our adjacent neighbor. You can see that our roof line is below, uh, theirs. Um, some, uh, we've emulated their. Gable ends and pitches and articulation in similar fashion to keep a consistent elevation and streetscape. Cutting a section from through the site across Pond Street. Plan north to south here. Looking at the existing housing, there's significant amount of dense, mature landscape buffer between. The neighborhood and our proposed project. I believe these trees are anywhere from twenty-five to thirty feet tall. We've actually updated our renderings to illustrate that a little bit more clearly. We were. Lower than that before. Um, and as we discussed up on the hill, you know, significant incline, uh, up where there is some more additional housing. Uh, turn it over to Ian, uh, to walk you guys through some of the updates for landscape.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Ian Ramey with Copley Wolf Design Group. Uh, we just have a few slides to kind of touch on some of the comments that we heard last week and, uh, show some new ideas, um. Uh, in response to some questions that were raised. So, uh, the three main comments that we had in our last meeting was to, uh, take a look at the tree canopy and how that. Uh, um, responded to the emergency vehicle turning through the parking lot. So we have a study to show you that. Uh, there was a comment about studying the vun earth and pedestrian, uh, cross paths. And then there were some comments about the arbor design. So we have slides to show that. And then we also want to show you tonight, um, uh, an approach to site lighting. And give you a little more detail on the planting design. So if you go to the next slide. So here's our new plan and just highlighting the, the big changes, um, in the upper part of the plan, you can see the note adjusted tree placement for emergency access. We have a diagram that kind of shows exactly what we had moved, um, and how we had moved it. Um, at the lower left, we revised the arbor element, uh, to make that more, um, in line with some of the comments that we, um, heard from you guys about a curved. Element and having it be more integrated into the landscape. And then the last thing we did noted on the lower right-hand side is adjust the angle, sorry for the typo. Um, of those outer cross paths to kind of have those respond a little better to the curved geometry of the vun earth. Um, so if we go to the next slide. So this first slide here talks about the adjustments that were made to the tree position relative to the path of travel for those emergency vehicles. Um, we only highlighted in green the trees that had moved. So that. Blue outline is sort of the outer range of the, uh, vehicle path of travel that, uh, Bob had described in the previous meeting. Uh, what we had done is take those trees and, um, you know, physically slid them away from that path of travel, um, in those areas where there was a conflict. There is still a little bit of sort of nominal overlap, but you know, i- in the case where that happens, you're really talking about just the outer fringes of branches that are. Potentially brushing against the vehicle. That in no way is an obstacle or a barrier to the, you know, to the access of the vehicle. And again, just to remind everybody, the reason we have the trees in the parking lot is to be able to get shade over the paved surface to reduce the heat island effect. So. I think we have a good balance here. Next slide. So here's a before and after enlargement of the vun earth. Um, again, you can see in the top plan, which was the previous plan, we had those sort of. Um, straight down paths that were aligned to the edges of the building. And the, the scheme at the bottom now, we've angled them. Um, and sort of orient them closer to where the, uh, main entries to each of those wings would be. And then on the other side, they sort of get closer and more direct to the actual intersections with sidewalks. So I think it's a better and more direct design. Um, the other thing to note is you can see that the, the arbor structure, which was previously shown as a. Kind of a, a, a square element and we had shown some concepts, um, images of what that would be, but not a design. Now we've provided a design, so it's this kind of gently curved element. Um, that it has splayed rafters and I think starts to really set up the idea of. Kind of an entryway into the site in response to that, uh, plaza space better. We go to the next slide. So here's, uh, some more studies about that. So the plan enlargement, you can see. Um, uh, at the upper left and then the, uh, screenshots in the upper right are our model images that just kind of describe, um. How we're studying how the structure would work. We think it's most likely made out of. Large timber like a western red cedar or similar. Um, it has rafters that kind of span out beyond the beams. Um, and it kind of spans over that, um, that space that has the walkway into the, um. Into the dentist or the, the doctor's office and also spans over a portion of that. Program terrace. So I think there's, there's, there's a good balance there. And then the lower images are just sort of precedent images that we use to derive the design from. Next slide. Uh, there was a question about lighting, so we wanted to just, um, show you some initial thoughts. Our approach here is that, um, you know, the lighting really wants to be dark sky friendly. We're going to have full horizontal cutoffs. We'll have asymmetrical distribution so that the light back spill is, is minimized and only focused on the areas where we need it. Uh, we're looking at a three thousand or lower Kelvin color, color temperature, which just means that. It's a little bit warmer, a less, less blue and, um, it, we, you know, studies show that that reduces or eliminates impacts wildlife. And then the use of LED, um, as Ben had touched on, is a sustainability measure that reduces the energy. Um, the images of the pole lights are shown as a concept, as well as the bollards, the wall lights. Um, so we think we have a combination of sort of, uh, pole lights around the perimeter of the parking lot where we have the pedestrian walkways. We have bollards that are integrated into the vun earth and the, the pedestrian paths. Because we do have some site walls, we think that there's wall mounted lighting that would be effective, um, as an accent, but also if there's signage there, it would, it would illuminate the signage. And then we talked about having, uh, lights that are integrated into that arbor element so that it, it has, uh, you know, a nighttime effect and some specialty to it. And then the green trees are trees, uh, on the plan that we're anticipating potentially having some subtle uplighting, kind of mood lighting, just to. To make it feel, um, interesting and welcoming. The next slide. And then, uh, here, just getting into some specifics of the planting materials, we've broken it out into. Uh, the proposed deciduous trees, the shrubs, perennials and vines. Um, you know, many of these, if not all, are native species. All of them are well adapted to this particular climate and, um. Will be able to tolerate periods of drought and, you know, typically able to, um, you know, use less water than, uh, non-native ornamental species. And then on the right side, just some images of those, um, plant materials. I think you can see there's a, a wide range of colors and textures and the intent is to have a lot of seasonal interest. And I think that's our last slide. I'll hand it back to Matt. Thank you.
Thanks, Ian. Um, and I'll quickly walk through some of these overall plans. You guys have seen these before. We're still proposing a hundred and twenty units for the development. Retail at the ground floor with some amenity space and main lobby. Moving up into the building, we do have a double height space for the lobby, uh, entry area for the residential portion of the building. Our units generally stack as you move up, uh, as we've discussed before, it's a mixture of. One bedrooms, two, and two bedrooms, uh, and one bedroom plus units. On the roof plan, uh, we started to illustrate where potential, potential sole areas are. Um, it, a, a point to note here is we have shown the. Can roof condenser slightly offset from the corridor, understanding that there is, might be acoustic concern with that, but. Just trying to consolidate some potential solar areas, uh, still in exploration as to exactly where these are going to land. Um, but we do have the flexibility and we have done these condensers over units before, um, with a little more soundproofing. Similarly to, uh, one hundred Chestnut Street, we are proposing to conceal all our. Condensers and rooftop equipment, any penetrations, the solar arrays with this mansard sloped roof. Um. As you can see illustrated on the elevations. Uh, the, it does go around the whole perimeter of the building, uh, maintaining a good, uh, sightline screening of anything on the roof. Move quickly through the elevations because I always feel that perspectives do a good job, um, showing more. Um, intent, but happy to come back to these later if you guys want to take a closer look at them. Um, just see, these are the courtyard and back elevations, side elevations. Uh, again, here's the building section that you had previously seen, um, for the based on, uh, project. We are going to be, have something very similar here. Uh, and we have started to illustrate how low the solar panels can actually be on the roof. Uh, this is a very typical system that we see in these types of projects. Um. They are illustrated sometimes against a, a slope, so this is just for illustrative purposes. This isn't necessarily showing the best solar orientation at this time. Um, these are grouped, uh, multiple panels to, uh, in a, on a, a low lying rack. Uh, and it just rests on top of the roof membrane itself. Um, sometimes there will be some connection points, uh, to, for wind load and uplift and such. Moving into the perspectives, uh, we've updated this to illustrate the changes that Ian has been making, um, and illustrate the new. Trellis and arbor and, uh, gathering space in the front of the building. As you can see, it, it is a nice light, organic looking, natural look into the, the setting that we have here. Um, I think it, it, it's not overpowering and as Ian mentioned, it starts to develop a sense of welcoming and entrance into the site. Um, and start to define this space as a true gathering space and area where people will congregate and interact. Moving down, uh, elevation along Pond Street, uh, as we've discussed many times before, we have, uh, the base middle and top expression. Masonry at the bottom, fiber cement siding, uh. Grouped bay elements that come down a story to help lower the scale. Uh, gable ends and dormers to again also lower the scale and provide more of a, uh, three and a half story looking building instead of a full four-story looking building. Allowing the building to be able to, uh, vary in scale as you come across the elevation. Looking back again into the vun earth, um, just, uh, you guys have seen this before. Again, we did, the one change that we did look at here was. Making these bay elements of color. They were white before. I think they were getting a little whitewashed and. They weren't really showing how the building was stepping down and coming out and interacting with the vun earth. Uh, you can see we've illustrated. Uh, some small, uh, roof structures as well to signify where entries into these retail or amenity spaces could be located. Coming into the vun earth, uh, to kind of better. Coming into the Voon Earth to kind of better illustrate a sense of what this might look like. As you can see, we are proposing kind of this curbless setup here. Very pedestrian friendly, lots of bollards, as Ian mentioned, it'll be lined across a very nice even spread of light across the whole Voon Earth, allowing a lot of intersection of pedestrian access across. And there's also the ability still to have some areas where outdoor seating or gathering spaces can be along the retail portion of the building. Looking, kind of turning ourselves to the right, looking at our neighbor, just to give you guys a sense of how we kind of compare to them. It's, it's, you don't see it so much when we take a perspective looking further down Pond Street. A lot of this landscape actually blocks this building since the two, since this building is set back a little bit more than ours. But as you can see, our, the scale and massing is very much in tune with what we was, is already there. Coming down Pond Street again, looking back at our building on a side elevation. The, again, the existing building here, we did not unfortunately have enough time to illustrate some of the site stuff here, but you can, there is a curb cut and some bioswales that are located here. We began to illustrate how we will be appropriately shielding the, our neighbor from any headlight and light pollution with our continuous hedge. And you can see again, this would be the location of Putzmore, but obviously since there is no necessarily large structures there, you're not really seeing much. This is a perspective looking back on the existing houses. This, this particular, there was I believe two submitted in the, in our, our set. This one is the one that is taken looking from a second story window of the townhouse. With adjusted, we have also adjusted the trees to accurately reflect the height that's currently on site. These are shown between 25 and 30 feet tall. I think before we had shown this image, you could see almost the full two stories and now barely even the, the fourth story is just starting to peak over the trees. A shot looking from the backside corner, this is kind of where we have the dog run and trash setup. I don't think we've ever kind of showed a clear perspective of what we've been proposing for the back of the building. But similarly, we're taking a very similar penetration of the gabled ends and dormed roofs to help step down towards our neighbors. Again, these large double bays acting as another way to step down and create this three story mass. And that concludes our updated presentation. I have to turn it over to you guys for any questions. Or Ben, I don't know if you had any other things you want to discuss tonight.
No, that's fine. I've turned it over to the board.
Okay. Thank you for the, thank you for the updated presentation. I'll now open it up to questions and, questions and comments from the board.
I, I have a couple Trisha. First of all, I think, I want to commend Ian and the team for, for what they've done with the improvements on the, on the front of the Voon Earth. I think is very successful, all the changes they've made and moving the trellis. They were what's done. It's really a multi-purpose feature and not just like something to look at in the middle of the plaza. I think it, it gives a lot of new functions to the space. So I think, I think that that's looking very good. The questions I have are, first of all, the, the, did they remember incorrectly? Or do you change the colors of the building from what we've seen before?
We haven't changed the colors. They may just be looking a little whitewashed sometimes. Depending on my screen and your screen, it's still intended to be the blue siding, a cobblestone, kind of a grayish siding and white siding as well. And like a gray whitewashed brick at the retail elevations.
Yeah. Okay. And what, what is the horizontal distance between the back of the building and the first residential building on the back?
Give me a second. It's probably around 180 feet. At least.
Okay, that's, that's good. I just wanted to make sure what the number was. But that's it. Other than that, I think, I think the improvements, improvements that have been made are really good. Did these, Trisha, did these changes or these reviews went through the sign review? Already or because the, the letter is very recent?
Yep. Peter, can you jump in? You're muted.
Thank you. Just to speak to that, no, these have not been to the design review. So since design review, there was a, you know, the, I believe they went to design review, but for the purpose of design review, there was a long break. We actually re notified everybody. And the submittal kind of came in, the newest submittal, you know, with design in the civil drawings that are obviously going off the review. But I can state that this is not gone and is scheduled for June 2nd, which is the Tuesday before our next 24th meeting. And then design review will actually review this project along with the Village of America's 100 Chestnut Street. But for both projects, please know that we readvertise. And that would be addition to put it into the newspaper and actually sending a, a postcard out to everybody as well. So that is in the works.
Marcelo, my, my memory may be faulty on this, but I believe, I believe for for 100 Chestnut, we, you know, did have the, a very specific kind of list that we were ready to hand over to the design review committee. And I think since we hadn't seen the design of this building for a long time, the list here was still in my mind, still kind of unformed, but I, I could not be remembering that incorrectly.
No, I'm, I'm with you. I, I
Yeah, okay. Cause really we've been focusing on that outdoor space and the building itself has kind of just been a an outline, you know, for really, for like, so, so this would be a time to kind of both make comments. Obviously to the applicant, but also think about what things we might want to have the design review committee look at in, in more detail. With, you know, and, and make suggestions or, or recommendations. So I wanted to say that I, and obviously anyone planning board, please feel free to jump in. I wanted to say that I, I also was kind of intrigued by the new configuration of the trellis pavilion, you know, for lack of a better term, at the beginning of the site. I know I had commented about, you know, how could we make this structure serve more than one purpose? We kind of got rid of the kind of stagnant notion of a, just a typical bus stop. But we wanted, you know, how could this fun area be both kind of a, a place to wait for the bus, but have a different function on a different time of day? And I thought that was, I, I thought that was actually very well done, that you could easily hang out there and see the bus when it approaches and be able to access that, not really understanding how the buses, buses work along that street. But it seems, it seems very probable, a place that where you could wait for a ride, you know, say. So I appreciated that. In looking at some of the samples you showed of that structure, some of the example structures, the, the verticals were further apart. I'm, I'm trying to think of, you know, if there's a small band playing under that structure, you know, does the, do the posts get in the way? Or can it, can it open up a little bit more with the verticals? But the, the shape of it, I, I think is really nice and really fits into the, the rest of the site plan of that area that you've developed. A couple of things on the building. Maybe we can bring up some of those perspectives again, Matt.
Sure.
I hadn't really remembered, maybe I was just focused on other things. Yeah, you can pause there. The kind of smaller three story bays that don't, yes, that don't go up to the fourth floor. And I don't know if they're a different color now, or maybe they're popping more, but I think, I think that element really helps to start breaking up that flat facade. And I, I think they're, that they really assist with that. I was wondering about the, I was wondering about the slope on the, what I'll call the tower, the corner piece. It seems, I'm sure you've tried it various ways, but it's, it seems a little like kind of flat to me.
Yeah.
But I, I figure you've been playing with it and will come up with where it should be.
I, if I may, I, I had, we have looked at it different ways and what we were feeling was, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a gateway element, it's a marker, but when it got too tall or the same height of the other roof line, it was maybe overpowering, it was losing, it was losing, it was, it was doing, trying to do too much. That's why. Happy to look at another alternative, but I think that's where we landed on that one was somewhere in between. Obviously, we didn't feel like a total flat roof there, bringing the roof line way down made it, didn't make any sense. So that's why we landed where we did.
Yeah, I can see that. I think it's just, it's like, I'm betting it went through a bunch of iterations and to me it's still maybe in that gray area. But that's just one design opinion. And, and the other thing I was going to note is that I think when we look at the perspectives at street level at the Voon Earth kind of area. To me, maybe the, the retail component, and this might be a better question again for Marcelo, but to me the retail component isn't maybe separate enough or stand out enough from the residential component. It still looks pretty residential to me, I guess. And I'm wondering if that can really be more, you know, is there a way to change that a little bit? I'm, I'm not sure how, but it, it really, to me, it really blends into the residential. And I would want to know that that's a place when I don't live there, that I would be welcome to go into, I guess. Marcelo, what do you think on that? Is, are you in disagreeing or?
Are you?
I am.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think it's a good point and I don't know if that has changed. Matt can tell us. In, in previous iterations, there, there was a, a kind of a visible delineation. I don't know if it's because of the color of the material or or the installation. But, but, but typically on, on, on a town or, or a, or a commercial street, you, you tend to see more, more of a an arcade and a little more transparent permeable walls where, where the retail happens. I don't know if that's something that, that, that Matt, you can tell us if, if, if that needs more study or, or what is the recommendation that you, that you would?
So we, this, the horizontal band is still there. It's, it's, you know, our rendering programs are always fickle. We're always battling, trying to get the right lighting and such. There is, you know, a, a piece of one by six and a piece of one by six to create a continuous signage band here. This is intended to be the break between our masonry and fiber cement lap siding above. We had looked at, you know, making the windows larger at the ground floor here. I can definitely look at that again. I think we started to get, go away from that because there was an extreme amount of glazing there. And maybe we just need to look at locating it more in central areas that make more sense and let, letting some of this rhythm to continue to be here. I'm not opposed to, you know, I, I actually kind of take this a little bit as a compliment that it, it blends a little bit residential. But I would like it to stand out more commercial as well. So I think I can, I can fuss around with some of the storefronts and glazing on the ground floor and help that.
Yeah, I, I, I think what you just said is kind of probably, I think is a tool that you could explore and it's, it's, it's not too much about the, the, the overall square footage of glazing, although any retail establishment would want as much as they can get for visibility. But it's really about the concentration. I mean, if you have a rhythm that is, that is so monotonous, it, it, it becomes almost unreadable. I mean, you, you don't focus your eye on it. If you, if you can kind of make it less, it doesn't have to necessarily follow the exact lines of the residential plant above, but, but I, I think, I think putting that in, in a different order might, might be, might be worth studying. And one more thing, of course, I, I, I can totally understand where you are at the, the, the design process right now. And this rendering is one thing that they do not show, which ends up being important if you, if you're not careful, but seeing what you've done with the rest of the building, I assume is on, 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 on your radar. It's really the, the organization of all the gutters and downspouts usually tend up to be a mess if you don't, if you're not careful and especially with these towers, you have a lot of roof configurations. And I, I just want to ask you to, to please be careful when you study that. So the, the, this whole order doesn't get impacted by, by careless location of those.
Totally, totally appreciate that comment, Marcelo. And if I may, I, my typical tact to those gutters and downspouts is always to try and allocate them at the ends, trying to find locations where there is a natural horizontal break in the building, so they're not just sitting right there in the middle of field plane of siding. And yeah, I think we actually started to illustrate where we were contemplating some of the downspouts on our roof plan as well. Always trying to illustrate them in inside corners, away from outside corners as possible, but also, also away from the main elevation facade of the
Okay. And just my, my last comment would be in the perspective that you had before, and going back to Tricia's comment. It, it seems to me that the, the, the base that lowered the scale really do a good job at, at that. What, what I'm, I guess let's, let's convince about is the proportions of those canopies in front of the retail spaces and this kind of skinny columns at the ends, they, they feel a little less natural. I, I would recommend that maybe you study they become more, more like a feature maybe with more glass. Maybe that's where you have the accent. I don't know. You, you, you would probably come up with the, the good option.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the planning board?
Matt, we've never seen this view before, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So maybe that's why it, I think like Marcelo and Trisha said, there's some, I'm seeing a lot of green on the elevation. I'm not seeing any grays anymore. So it actually threw me off the first time you showed the slides. So I don't know if anybody else saw it. I'm seeing very green on my screen.
Really? It, it shows blue, dark blue and gray on my screen.
No, it was, it showed a very different color scheme than what you've been showing so far. The very first screen just shut me off. It's like, no, this is not, I hope you are not going. So it probably is my screen as well, but
No, no, I, I see the same way, Deepa. That's why I asked. My mind looks very
So I was like, oh my God, my eyes going bad tonight. So I guess already Marcelo has covered. So I think the idea of that proportion, something is throwing off that proportion. I guess you have those railings that's kind of blending with the background color, but the proportion of that portal is getting lost because now it has a lot more tiers going on. So that pronounced or that important entry wow factor is totally lost because now you have so many elements fighting on the same 75% of the height, it feels like. So it, it feels like it's trying to do too much. And obviously with the colors, it's starting to stand out so differently. I feel like I wonder if you should kind of reduce the number of elements that's there vertically, horizontally. I think it's too many things going on there.
I, I agree with you. Yep.
And then the other one, the tower that Trisha mentioned, is the slope of that tower because it's a smaller span different from the one which is behind it?
Uh, yeah, if we, if it was at the same pitch as the roof behind it, this would be pretty tall. It'd be up around here.
Yeah. Maybe that's another thing that's fighting and it's starting to stand out and not really blending. Well, or kind of being a pronounced one because it definitely, the pitch is definitely different. Um, but yeah, I think majority of the points. I'm glad that my eyes are not bad tonight.
All right. I mean, if it's if it's beneficial, I mean, when you get to these renderings at a certain point, and maybe this will be for design review committee. I mean, maybe you can get prints that you are happy with, Matt, that where the colors are showing what you intend and send hard copies.
These are based off of the Hardy standard colors, so I, I can get that slide back in here. We had it, I think in our first presentation and we showed it to the designer review committee. So I'm happy to illustrate exactly what colors we were intending.
What point do we really share actual samples? Because sometimes samples are so much easier to look at versus
I can give, I can send samples. Yeah.
So I don't want the design review So I don't want the Design Review Board to kind of go back to the drawing board and start with the colors because they've done a lot of work, so. Uh, if it is a matter of printing and the color that you're seeing on screen, I wonder if it's easy if you see actual samples and then make a call versus. I don't know, Tricia, is there a point when we ask for samples and?
Yes, I mean, def- definitely, and typically it's a lot easier when we're all in the same room together and, you know, or the. As well as the Design Review Committee, but if they're still also meeting online, those samples can be left at Town Hall for them to come in. Look at in advance um and and take this look at, you know, printed renderings that couldn't be there in the samples as well, so that they can really. Get a get a better vision of um the real world instead of digital world.
Yeah, I I actually have samples in the office um of all these colors, I believe, so I can actually get that together in very short order.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we I think we have these colors on our job site now, Matt, so we can leave boards at Town Hall. Um, so if anyone wants to stop and see them, if Peter's okay with a couple of boards in his office, then they'll be, we can drop them off.
Uh, no, I just to speak to that, I'm I'm happy to uh have anything. Uh, or host anything in my office, and we typically do this for a large project, so. Um, trim, clavards, whatever 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 details that you want to present, uh, please drop it off to Town Hall.
So so that's easier for you and you don't have to have to fight with renderings, totally understand graphics issues.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And 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 Tricia, just to come full circle to how the the conversation started many meetings ago, is uh we we focus a lot on. On the public realm, which I I think we 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 achieve a substantial improvement and and what this project is gonna. Offer to the town, uh, which I'm 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 happy that they develop that way. Uh, but conversely, the 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 opposite is is also true. Our our concern was uh the concerns of the neighbors on the back. Which are which were very important. I think having that 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 hedge line represented properly and and. Finalize on that gap which Ian is proposing um. Is is I think it's a good measure and and the dimension, the 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 distance from the from from this building to to the neighbors. Um, is probably larger than 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 many town streets. Uh, so so I I I think that that the 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 perspective shows that uh that that really. They they will be much more closer to each other than it would be to this building, and I I feel, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but. I I I feel that 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 the the impact of. The building on on neighbors is is really no different than 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 what you would experience in anywhere else, or probably is probably gonna be better. Um, which I I I know the name, many of the neighbors may 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 still feel that 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 is. Too large a project, um, but but I'm 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 happy to 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 see that the team has made a big effort to. To improve that edge.
Yes, I I agree with that. Um. Are there are there further questions or comments from the planning board? Otherwise, I will open it up to public comment if there's anyone who. Who would like to speak, they can raise their hand.
Oh, I think you have a comment. Um, and it in, I don't know if this was particularly on. Just the building, but like the site things about parking, the last recall, it was um. Not in compliance with their zoning about parking, and then I think um also the utilities, because I know we obviously have water and sewer, but. I believe our sewer through Framingham is sort of based on X amount of gallons and with. Many projects coming online, I I don't know when that will get looked at, so it may not be tonight, but I just wanted to draw. Some questions that I will have.
So Peter, would you say those are a part of the um the the check that is going to the third party review?
Yep, that's part of the check that's going to the third party review, and it is a uh is a high priority, is the DPW reviews this project, I can tell you. Uh, and I know the DPW, um, and we've we've looked at this, you know, from a from a standpoint, from the sewer gallon standpoint. Uh, and I can get you those exact numbers uh for the for the next meeting. I do want to note that as part of this development and. We've always kind of spoken to it, but there's a suit, there's a there's a. Pump station which is at the Bay Old Colony Road, uh, which right now only connects to the Chestnut Street Station. And uh, correct me if I get my terminology wrong, but uh in agreement with the fabric company. Uh, a number of decades ago, it was supposed to be a connection to the Bracket Road Pump Station. Uh, which is down off of right off of the Framingham, which is connects back to the Framingham Line. Uh, there's about a twenty-foot section of pipe that was never completed. Um, and with that said, um, as part of this project. Uh, it and and as the fabric company is the apparent landowner, um, that connection is going to be made. Um, to allow gravity-fed uh wastewater to flow in the in any event. From the colony, Old Colony Pump Station to the Bracket Road Pump Station. Um, and uh, so that is uh has not been forgotten, and it is part of this project as well. Um, Mr. Stevens, would you like to speak to that at all or just um?
Yes, um, I mean, I I did see the issue. It's um, I did talk to Halian Ward, who is the. Towns consultant. Um, we've asked Halian Ward, we we supplied them with a check. They're gonna supply us with an estimate, um, sort of a third-party estimate to do the work. Um. We were told day one that um. Regardless of whose legal or not legal obligation or not obligation from the fabric company, that this area of town. Um, this connection needed to be done for this area of town, especially if more capacity was coming, so um. We we're still on that position, that has not changed. We're just trying to get a better handle on. We we physically, if I've been to the site, I. Opened up the structures, I've seen them. Um, we're now just trying to get some real hard numbers put on it, so it can be qualified into any approval.
Thank you.
Um, I have a follow-up question on, so the third party that review, do we have like a standard um maybe checklist or something we. That we're asking and can you get that, or is that just a project-by-project stuff?
So they have a, so uh our the company GTG, uh, they've been working with the town for the last twenty-five years. Um, we, the town, you know, I can ask them if they have a standard checklist or if they go through, and I can obviously report back.
Thank you.
All right, I will then uh open it up for public comment. I see. I will let Peter manage, but. I see one hand raised, so that's Mr. Dasone.
Uh, yes, uh, excuse me, I was just taking a note. Uh, yes, Mr. Mark Dasone, please uh please. Uh, unmute yourself and uh and please tell us where uh your name and your address. Mark.
You're muted, Mark.
You're muted.
You're muted, Mark.
Then I'll repeat. Where's my name? Mark Dasone. Where's my address? Forty-nine Hawthorne Road. And I'm just gonna be asking about the um perspective. On the um. The retail side. Is I'm I'm gonna ask a couple of questions on that. If you can bring it up, I'd be a lot more better described for you. Thank you. Now. As we as we citizens living in this town, we know um. The Lesmere Plaza. Over by the um Mexican Restaurant. And on the side down towards the back, there are stores, and they got these sort of roofs on, but. Not the slanted ones, but the flat against the uh the roof base itself. Those are those ones are looking at their, and this one. Why would there be a like a bookend with the with the roof slanted out and the three indented? Why can't it be either roof slanted out or inside flat to the building? Why was it designed this way?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question. I think what you're asking is, uh, why have we. Only pushed out certain areas of the facade?
It it looks like um, like I said, if you if you use a bookcase with books on each side, in the middle of the book, in the middle of the books. It looks like um the bookends and the three in the spaces. Is um the stores signs and the other two are coming out to the edge of the parking lot. Okay?
You're talking about these front roof elevation pieces here.
Yeah, the two that's up by basically the.
Yeah, I think we're gonna go back and revisit these uh and and take another stab at them, because I I. I agree with a lot of the comments of the planning board, that they're they're not quite. Hitting the mark um and and getting to where we need to be to make this feel very retail. Um, so next time we come back, you'll definitely see something different.
Well, I'm not saying it's not looking very re- retail, I'm just um staying for the front. But what's inside would be retail itself, but it's just the site coming through the doors. Okay, now my other one would be coming to the front with the perspective. Okay. I was understanding what Tricia and everybody was saying about the corner. You put a couple of boosters on it, it could look like a rocket getting ready to blast off. But I'm really looking at what's in front, the um the striped wood. Nobody said anything about that yet, but I will. What is that?
That's the trellis structure that Ian had been referencing in his uh site plane, and it's not striped. That's just the shadow that you're seeing from being cast by all the horizontal members of the trellis structure itself.
Well, now without. Shadows, would that be a solid color?
Yep, um, and we go back to Ian's. Uh, so here is an example of what it may look like, uh, solid wood.
Oh, okay, that that's a heck of a lot better for me to understand. Um, yeah. It kind of kind of looks like a uh. A walking umbrella if you stay under it and just wanna stay out of the hot sun and everything, that that's always good. And you got the walkway that's in front. That that U shapes around a island of grass. Yep, in the in to in my layman's uh design outlook, looks like it fits right in. That it walk, it's a walkway. And it looks like a a front. Instead of like a regular parking lot with nothing there, you got to walk about so many so many miles feet to get to the front of the building here. At least there's some distractions from it, and with the that and the wood, the wood frame. And the and the U-shaped walk and the grass to the doors themselves. And look, now I'm looking down at the left corner of the four of the four, eight, seven squares. That actually looks a lot more pleasing to the to the site. And more welcoming than what it was without them. So I'm saying kudos for that and about the retail stores and and the uh and the and the front stair, you're going back. And I'll talk about it again, redesign or rethink it, but yeah, these these are a little more better to the person of the site and for. What this should be coming. Thank you, done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dasone. Uh, at this current time, I see no more uh raised hands uh at this point. So.
It's my recommendation, Peter, um, knowing that this is on its way to the Design Review Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Is that if anyone from the planning board has some specific direction, I think I think we got we got a document today, a memo today that outlines. Um, some of those uh, some of those things that maybe to focus the Design Review Committee on, but if there's anything we want to. Add to that, we can let Peter know and he can adjust that, adjust that list. So um. Not knowing where it's going to be before, when when they get it, I I would put the the same things that we that we've commented on today to have them. You know, take a look about, you know, the retail and the um the and the uh. The the tower piece, um, the roof of the tower piece, I think in in general, though, I would say, and please. Anyone on the planning board, jump in. In general, we are. Fairly, we think this is going in the right direction. We're we're fairly pleased with where it is, though always good to have another. Set of opinions. Is is that accurate?
I I think I think so. The 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 there's uh uh there there were three items on Emma's uh on the letter that Emma forwarded to to all of us. That that went to them, so I think those are pertinent pertinent to to discussion. Um, uh, and I think uh. If 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 there's any other items, would be good if we could make them specific so that we can get good feedback. I think that. The tower roof would probably be one that is worth giving other other thoughts. Um, and 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 the comment on the on the retail um uh entry points. Um, I I would I would refrain from expanding it a lot more than that, because then we will get. We we wouldn't get helpful um commentary.
Um, I do wanna ask something, because I know we we found out that there, you know, high probability of being. Significant number of children there to at least um. I mean, we consider some play space because it's it's Route one twenty-six, right? Like. You could play in the parking lot of the plaza next door, or you can play in the um parking lot there, so. I I think we we should at least um see about that as a possibility, and I I guess design review would be. Um, maybe the way to at least raise that issue.
Did we, what was the count for for likely? Number of children based on your other developments? I know I know we did it. I believe we talked about that before.
Um. I don't think I can remember off the top of my head. Matt Stevens, do you remember off? I think it was twelve to fifteen.
It was about ten students that we had at Ashland Woods, which is a sixty-unit uh project.
Okay, so we thought, I think we've, uh, the number eighteen to twenty school-aged. Potential children, I think, is what I recall, but as we mentioned before, there's no three-bedroom units here. Um, they're all ones and twos, which I think will significantly reduce the number of um. Potential renters um with children. And um. In it, in Ashland Woods, we had. Uh, a dozen, but I don't think, I think only about half were enrolled in the school system. Uh, we had some divorced kids. Um, dads with with registered kids who were in other school districts, um, but registered at the building.
So I'm not sure, Kate, what you were, maybe more specifically what you might be.
Well, I I I mean, I guess I've been, before I was on the planning board, I watched the planning board um. Shape something significantly better upfront, and so I I would just, I guess, speak up for. Future residents and at least ask that be considered a play space for children, that is particularly because. Um. If I'm recalling Ashland Woods, that you maybe aren't on a busy street and a place, but there there isn't a play space. In this entire area.
If I may, uh, not to speak out of line, but Ian, please chime in as well. I think the intent is that the inside courtyard would be our. Location for, you know, some grill space, some outdoor play area. That would be where um a safe space for anyone to actually. Play outside.
Yeah, I think I think it'd be great in taking that we've been really focusing on the front. That is definitely true. But is that looking at that more secure place in the back, if that can um have a. Places that are appropriate for children, obviously, of almost um, that that encompasses a wide variety of things. Um, but to have that in mind as you're designing, you know, pre- designing, taking a closer look at that landscape.
Sure.
So. Um, any other questions from the board for that time, for this time?
I would just say going back to the overall thing, that I think the parking question is still pretty critical here, I think. As a whole, the building still feels squished onto that site, and that's because there's been the equivalent of. Twenty-five or so parking spaces eliminated um by shrinking them to smaller sizes than than what the town considers. what the town considers as parking space. Um and then, you know, on top of that, we're retaining walls on both sides to the level of site and fit this thing in. So um while the architecture's come a long way and and there's some a little bit more open space and usable space for the public in the front of the building, it still feel a little squished on the site to me, so I'll be interested to see how that comes back.
I I think we did note on that list, right, that to the um to pay particularly attention to the compact parking spaces and um and obviously that'll be going to third-party review as well. But um yes, that the, you know, fair point, that we haven't, we haven't circled back to look at parking. Obviously, we will be looking at that in terms of both commercial, residential, sustainability, um accessibility, you know, all all types of um qualifications, I guess, different different angles that we need to look at that for, so. Um definitely on the way, keep forward, yep.
Just to mention, this also is is being taken up by a traffic review uh law model. So that's was sent out early this week as well, so all the situation, the the points that come about about the parking and all, I mean, view as well. Along with the circulation, so once we hear back, obviously, I'll forward all responses to the applicant as well as the planning board, there's public documents posted on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess I just don't wanna lose sight of the fact that this is a hundred and twenty units where the bylaw headed at ninety-five or something, and I'm sure we added some additional um open space in the front, but it it seems to me like it came from shrinking parking. And so we we, the only real trade-off is um is the affordable at this point to to add the three units to the building.
So Peter, all those parking numbers um obviously will be looked at by the third-party review, so we will have data um on requirements, what's there. Um any comments that they have will be a part of, will be a part of that document, so it's gonna come come back around when we when we get their official analysis, correct?
Yeah, a hundred percent, yep. And that was all sent out and uh and uh, yeah, you know, the the parking, the number, the the parking, the spaces, the circulation, the size, the measurement of the spaces. Um obviously, that will be reviewed and and obviously will be uh, it will also include, you know, his professional opinion. His in her, in his and her professional opinion, as, you know, professional traffic engineers uh reporting back to the board as a third-party review.
Right, I would also ask the project team that as they proceed forward on the next iteration of this, to please keep that in mind, that's gonna be something that we're gonna be looking at carefully to making sure we're not putting something on a site that's um hard to get into, hard to utilize um in terms of the parking. So um on that note, I will believe then we will be sending this to design review committee. So we would be looking for a continuance here, is that right, Peter?
Uh then it's correct, so this project right now, uh obviously, the the third-party reviews have started. Uh this this project is is slated to go to in front of design review on June second. Um, excuse me, and so I tonight would ask this to be continued to the first meeting in June, which would be June ninth. And I just reached out to Mr. Ben and Matt Stevens uh and confirmed that the planning board and the uh applicant in this uh scenario are in full agreement that uh continuance to June ninth is the next step.
Concur.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anyone wanna make that motion that we of the continuance? I will, I will jump in. Um, so I will make a motion to continue the public hearing for five oh one Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review to um Thursday, June ninth. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, and a roll call vote starting with Deepa.
Deepa Wankadi.
Marcelo Rona, aye.
Asenjerzak, aye.
I'm a Kina.
Andrew Shakalai, so that is continued to June ninth. We will see you then, and we should hear back from design review by that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
All right, question from the planning board. It is nine thirty your time, only eight thirty my time. Um do you wanna take a few minutes break and come back before we open the three twenty Pond Street Public Hearing, which is the Mazzi uh project? Or do you wanna? Couple of minutes, it's nine twenty-seven, so I usually three, four minutes is is fine, so whenever everyone gets back, we will start up again. Peter, if you can give Anna a heads up, that would be great.
Yep, I'm gonna text her and uh right now and uh and we'll be back in a few to four minutes.
Great, thanks. All right. Just waiting, oh. I was gonna say, just waiting for Kevin to come on. Let's give him one more minute. There he is. All right, um, all right, so we are back officially. Uh our last public hearing for the night, uh three twenty Pond Street Site Plan Review. Um Peter, does this one need to be read? I can't remember if it was read.
Uh this is the first uh night the planning board's hearing it, and uh since Laxmi was our clerk, um I am happy to pull it up and read it into the record.
Great.
Thought I printed it out, but I forgot, I forgot to grab it off the printer. But with that said, uh just to introduce this project, this is three twenty Pond Street Mazzi Restaurant. Uh tonight, it is um being represented by Zach, um who is a co-owner and owner of Mazzi Restaurant, who will be walking us through the conversation and presentation. So before we jump into it, I'm just gonna read the public hearing notice, so please bear with me. The actual planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April twenty. Actually, you know what? Tricia, you are correct. On the twenty-eighth, we opened this, and I believe we continue. Is that correct? Actually, no.
Yeah, I I thought that was for McDonald's.
Yep, you know what, I read I read the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, um. Okay, here we go. Excuse me, take two. Uh the actual planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, at seven fifteen P M via Zoom video conference uh via um the web address to hear the petition of Mazzi Corp requesting a design plan review and site plan review per chapter forty A, section six of the Massachusetts zoning act, and chapter two eighty-two, section nine point six, design review, and section uh four point nine, site plan review, with the actual planning, uh this is, excuse me, with the actual bylaw. The applicant is proposing the construction of an outdoor dining area adjacent to the existing restaurant. The property in question is located at three twenty-six Pond Street, Sunset Map twenty-six lots uh two hundred and nine and two hundred and ten in the highway commerce district and the Pond Street overlay. Pond Street uh mixed-use overlay district. Parties wish to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the planning board ahead of time and appear uh at the time and place indicated above. Materials will be viewed at the Town Hall during normal business hours and on the town of Ashland's website under current cases, planning board, and zoning information. Uh for more information uh to be submitted comments, please contact Peter Magic at telephone number five oh eight five three two seven nine two seven or at petermagic dot ashlandmass dot com. As said, uh like the applicant, uh Zach, uh from Mazzi is here. Uh and I think it's appropriate to turn the uh the microphone over to Zach, if he can walk us through the applicant, the application request. Uh and I believe he is the best man to do that. So Zach, uh through the, Tricia, we'll give it back to Tricia, Tricia, you would like me to hand it over to Zach?
That that's fine, does he need to be able to share his screen?
Uh I can make him a co-host. And I also am happy to bring it up to you. So Zach, you are now a co-host, if you would like to share your screen, and I'm happy to also share the site for.
Uh yes, uh good evening, uh yes, Peter, if you could share your screen, that would be great, please. Uh first, I'd like to apologize, it will be a little background music, um I'm still at the restaurant, so um I don't know if you guys hear it, but um.
Yeah, just a little.
Okay, um so yeah, thank you for uh hearing our application. Um we are uh requesting to continue the use of our um extended outdoor seating, it's the tented area that we have outside. Um it has seventy-four seats, um the perimeter is covered in uh flowers and planters. Um we have jersey barriers separating the uh parking lot um for the tented area and the rest of the parking lot. The uh jersey barriers have been um uh built out, there's a wooden frame with lattice um over them, so you don't see them. Um we have lights on the inside of the tent um and sides that do roll down when needed. Um one of the important things of the tent for us for outside seating are those sides. Um unfortunately, the reality is we have a lot of construction right in front of us um that does uh during the day um blow up some dust, um so those sides need to come down and uh protect the seating for us. Um especially in the uh summer months, when um a lot of this work is being done, as you see now, um in front of there. Uh also, of course, the tent is very useful for the heat. Um during the day, when the sun is beating, you can't really sit outside on pavement and uh enjoy a meal unless you have some protection. Um as well as on the cool nights, um those sides can go down and keep the temperature kinda kinda steady. So that that tent is uh has been our our lifeline, our lifesaver through the pandemic. Um as you know, we had no indoor seating in the beginning, we opened July of twenty twenty. Um and uh the only way uh we made it through was uh is outdoor seating, of course. Um and it seems that people have really enjoyed outdoor seating. Um it's 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 becoming um a more normal thing, where in New England normally you you know, outdoor seating was very limited to most restaurants, very few seats, um cause you're, you know, you have availability of a few months. Um but now we've gotten used to it, this pandemic has really changed us, uh changed the way people eat, and they really enjoy being outside. Uh so this is a very important uh integral part of our our business now. Um we've spent a lot on this outdoor area, um as we had to in the beginning. Um and uh we we made it as uh as beautiful, as uh as um comfortable as possible. Um we've actually had a wedding reception in there. Um we've had many uh different parties. Um and people really enjoy it, so this is why we've decided that um, you know, the the best way forward from from um just offering a few outdoor seats on the patio was uh to extend into this uh tented area. Uh and that's why we came with this uh application that you see in front of you today. And that's why we came with this, uh, application that you see in front of you today.
Zach, I just wanna make note, uh, before we kind of hand it back over, um, to, uh, planning board, is that this outdoor tent is proposed to remain for the next three years, uh, indoor for thirty-six months. And so this is not a, uh, a permanent solution, obviously, but this would be a solution that would allow Mazzy to continue to have outdoor seating, um, through the road construction. Right now, the road construction is slated to have the last another two year, another, I would say, two years. Uh, and, uh, obviously should allow, hopefully, uh, the, the world to come out, uh, with a clear picture of the pandemic in, in the next steps. And so, um, Zach, I don't know if you wanna hit on that note at all, um, and if you missed it, uh, that's kind of what to, uh, make that point.
Uh, yeah.
Before we open up the questions.
Yeah, a- absolutely, uh, this tent is, is hopefully gonna let us, um, recuperate some of the, some of the pain and some of the expenses that we've, uh, gone through this pandemic. Um, and y- you know, uh, really protect us during this construction, um, to be able to have this outdoor seating, which is so desperately needed right now. Um, really, without a tented area, you, you really can't sit outside during this. Um, many businesses along one twenty-six, uh, that I've spoken to also, you know, uh, lunchtime has been very tough for most of us. Um, as, as you all know, of course, the construction causes some traffic, um, people try to avoid traffic as much as possible. Um, so i- i- it's hurt our lunches for sure. Um, o- o- on that note, our lunch is really, um, n- not viable to sit outside unless we have this tent. Um, and we hope that once this construction is done and one twenty-six is, is beautiful there with sidewalks and, and new streetlights and trees, um, then we can proceed with something, uh, e- essentially permanent, you know, expand that patio if possible.
Right. Thank you. Um, questions, comments from the planning board?
Oh, go ahead, Emma.
No, I, I was gonna say, I think this is our second kind of shot at outdoor seating after TJ's, and I'm kind of reminding myself of some of the things that we had discussed then, and we talked about the importance of almost like a checklist for us of things to think about, and I'm trying to remember them. And it may be helpful for us to look at our decision for TJ's and just sort of refresh our memory, but some of the things that jump out at me that we had talked about with that project that I think we would want to consider, um, you know, that makes this unique and similar, is the use of a parking lot area, right? And I think with TJ's, we were contemplating safety issues, traffic, movement, um, preventing accidents, et cetera, et cetera. And I think here we especially have to consider that, um, in light of the construction. So I, I wanna make this possible for, for Mazzy as quickly as possible. I mean, I live not far, and I very much appreciate, um, the outdoor seating model, and I wanna support it very, very much. I think we just need to kind of carefully think this through because it is unique, it's very close to construction and traffic. Um, and then the other thing I was gonna say is, I think it'd be great to get some more detail about the nature of it, like whether this will be year-round and how it's gonna look in different seasons. Not just, you know, this particular visual gives us a flavor of how it looks now during construction in spring and summer. Um, I'm kind of curious, you know, is there gonna be heat if, if in the fall? Are you gonna be using this kind of, which months of the year are you using it? And h- how is it gonna look? Um, are you gonna heat it? Are you gonna have lamps? Um, do we need to think about, you know, the fire department looking into this, things like that? Um, so not, not too clear from the page, um, and those are some of the things I'm thinking about.
Can you comment on those kind of facilities? I think you said you were using it April through October, I'm trying, um. Are, are there heating elements in the tent?
There are no heating elements in the tent. Uh, the intent is to, to use it just weather permitting, essentially, when it's comfortable to sit outside.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that clears up, that up a little bit. And then, do you wanna talk about, like, are there barriers, safety measures as far as traffic, all of that?
Yeah, so, um, the tented area is only accessible to the parking, the rest of the parking on one side. Um, the other three sides are, uh, one is facing the street, which has a barrier, there's no, uh, there's no way to get to the street, of course. Um, the other side is the driveway entrance, uh, to three twenty Pond Street. But again, that's up the hill with, um, grass area, so there's no access that way. Um, and the other side is our building, so those are the three sides that are, are closed off. The side that is accessible to the rest of the parking lot has, um, uh, four jersey barriers, um, in front of it, um, that we have built out on top with a, uh, white lattice structure. So you're not seeing these, um, kind of ugly jersey barriers, but they're there for protection, of course.
Are those, are those visible on?
Yeah, so it's, um, it's those orange, um, rectangular, uh, pictures. If you go to the, uh, yeah, the picture there on the, the smaller square, um, that's showing the street and the construction on the right side of that picture where you just see the tent. It's those orange, uh, structures right there. Yeah, exactly, right there, yeah.
So highly visible as well.
Yeah, yeah, so those separate, those separate the rest of the parking lot from the tented area. But now we have dressed them up, so you actually don't see the jersey barrier now. It's a, a, a white lattice, uh, structure covering them.
Yeah, Peter, is there, was there, um, when the pandemic started, just to kind of alleviate maybe some of these questions, was there, um, was there any check that the town, um, DPW or Doug Scott, who wasn't here at the beginning of the pandemic, um, was there some check that was done of just different outdooring facilities that, that kind of allowed them to just open up safely?
Yes, the biggest thing was safety, uh, jersey barriers, uh, to make sure that there was a, there was protection from vehicles. Um, and, and to make sure that, um, anybody sitting in a restaurant and or sitting outside had protection from, uh, passing traffic, um, in that case. Uh, and so that was always done. Uh, also would include with a tent, the tent would have to be proven to be not, uh, flame retardant, so they have to perform tent permit. Obviously, in this case, this tent would have to be a commercial-grade tent and flame retardant, uh, for safety. And I, and I know it is, and you might speak to Zach, and obviously they pulled a tent permit. Uh, with that said, uh, and then also we kind of, any, any of the outdoor seating areas concerned under the whole concept about heating, um, with gas, lamps, um, to obviously for warmth, uh, for, for extended outdoor seating areas. And those are the, the, the major three items, um, along with, you know, um, you know, accessibility, in, in, I believe the site is gonna be fully accessible, and it is, the paving, I don't see any i- issues regarding accessibility. Um, but those are the, those are the, I would say, the four staples within our checklist. Um, off the top of my head, without being able, without working out the, the, the documents that we have produced.
So the, the other thing I, I was thinking about, Tricia, um, and the board is, is kind of visual, right? So what's interesting to me is this is very different from, from TJ's, um, to highly, you know, right now it's in the middle of construction. Um, and so kind of our visual standard of what, what we might be concerned about as far as design and aesthetics is very different. And I, I absolutely think it's important to think about the three-year marker and how to time that with the opening of, um, of this reba- revitalization project, if you will, and how to time it just right so that we can move this along towards a more permanent visual when the root is looking beautiful and gorgeous, and we don't have kind of an older tent there. So I'm kind of curious, um, if, if the applicant could speak a little bit more about the age of the tent, um, repairs to the tent. What, what's your thinking about the three-year marker? Kind of why are you thinking three years and not two years? Um, tell us more about kind of the timing and the, the quality, if you will, of that tent material, and how often you've had to repair it, what, what your plans are for it, et cetera.
Um, yes, um, so this is our second tent, well, essentially our third tent, um, because the, uh, first two tents, uh, that we had bought, uh, which were the only ones we could get our hands on, to tell you the truth, in the beginning. Um, I don't know if you remember, we kind of had that, uh, hurricane slash little tornado at one point, um, and it crushed our tents. Um, so then we went and bought this tent, uh, which is the heaviest-duty commercial tent there is. Um, it is put up by a tent company, um, they take it down for us, they wash it, um, repair if needed, and store it for us in the winter. Um, we haven't, uh, needed any repairs yet, it's, it, we've only used it since, uh, this is our second time putting it up. Uh, last year we used it, and then this year. Um, it's a heavy-grade commercial material, um, easily washed and flame retardant, of course. Um, and the, uh, the idea of the three years is, is just kind of to, to give us the, the time to make sure that the, um, construction is done and that we can kind of recuperate some of this cost, because like I said, this is our third tent, um, during this pandemic. Uh, so we, we would love eventually to build out a, uh, extended patio as we have in the front there. Um, right now, it's just not economically physical, uh, feasible, I'm sorry. Um, so this, this three-year period, hopefully, if, if, if we, um, enter a new normal, normal time anyway, um, should give us the, the, the ability to do that, uh, later on.
And, and I appreciate that, I think I'm kind of thinking, you know, any time we say construction will take two, two years, it takes three. Um, but any time we, we hear a permit for, for any sort of shift or, or business decision, that also takes time. So I kind of wonder if, if a two or a two-and-a-half-year marker is better, just to kind of get the ball rolling, something more permanent, so that we can time things so that we don't have a tent structure, um, when the construction is done. Um, you know, and, and I, I think some assurance or something in our decision about repairing this tent structure, um, reasonably throughout the timeframe is also really important. Um, hopefully, you're not gonna need to replace it again, um.
It is insured now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, my, my question, Tricia, is, um, I'm trying to understand this plan, because I've been at the restaurant, so I, I, I understand that the patio that you have the tent at right now is right off of the, of the door. But these are green and yellow, uh, rectangles there. Um, i- is, 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 are, are both of those, um, uh, the pictures tents, or is just one of them?
Just the yellow part is the tent, um, the green side is the, the empty part of the lot that is, uh, inaccessible essentially, uh, to cars anymore, because we put that tent, uh, in between.
So what's gonna happen in that space?
Um, it, it's just empty at the moment, uh, we don't, we don't use it for anything.
And on, on this plan, on, on the this plan, you don't have, um, an objective for that? Are you gonna just leave it landscaped or, or just open?
It, it is, um, there is some parking, uh, in the plan, it shows it as a nice square, but, um, if you see the half, the half moon there, that's, uh, that's the landscaped area. So it's, it's, uh, so two parking spots there, and they, they will just stay open, yes.
And, and so the, the, the tent that you're gonna put as an extension, is that just gonna be in the parking lot? Or are you gonna prepare the, 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 the floor for, for, for the dining area in some way?
The, the parking lot is, the, uh, tent, I'm sorry, is, is already up, yeah, um, and, um.
You, you don't, you don't intend to, 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 for, for two or three, I mean, several years, are you gonna have any, any, any treatment to that, to that, um, floor? Because in, in, in the prior application, they, they did that, um, and, and I was wondering if, if your plan was just to keep it, if it works, were you just in, on asphalt? Or you were planning to, to, to dress it up a little bit, which, which is what you're gonna see from the street?
Yeah, at, at the moment, we have it just on, uh, on the pavement. Um, we haven't n- needed to, uh, add anything yet. It is, makes it easier to clean, actually, um, instead of adding some kind of flooring there, which would, you would, you would have some, you know, maybe food dropping, or, you know, utensils, or, or, I don't know what else. Um, and because it's not a really, uh, forever type of structure, we really wouldn't wanna build anything out there.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand, I think I would be really interested when this becomes a, a permanent, uh, uh, project, uh, because that's gonna be facing the street, and, and, and we'd really want this overlay district, the whole road to, to become something special. But, uh, in the meantime, I mean, I, I totally understand the need.
I, I don't think I've ever been underneath this tent. I, I have been on the outdoor patio at Mazzy, and I believe this, the paving is in much better condition than, than around TJ's and is in fa- fairly good condition, if, if, uh, if I remember correctly. Um, so from my point of view, the fact that, you know, the fact that they're gonna hit doubly, I, I was on the planning board when Mazzy came through the first time with, with the, the official building permits, when they were changing it from the Blockbuster to Mazzy Restaurant. That was pre-pandemic, and, um, and, uh, they paid, uh, a great deal of attention to materials, to the way the building looked, to obviously to the, the outdoor space. Um, they put a great deal of attention to, to all of those, all of those matters at the time. And, um, and so I, I'm sure it was, uh, e- extremely difficult when you, you have this business ready to open and the pandemic hits. And then you figure out what to do with it, and then construction starts on a two-year project, which i- it is a, quite a mess over there. So, um, from my point of view, if, if it meets all of the, um, the, the basic safety issues, which I believe, you know, we would wanna be sure, but it meets the safety issues of, um, cars not going into the tent, um, that it's fully accessible, which I believe it is, um, you know, all of those, those different considerations, then giving this restaurant, which is just, we're very optimistic at the time about it getting established in Ashland, this kind of leeway, not only to get through the, um, construction, which is obviously something that other restaurants in town in downtown or along one twenty-six are facing, but certainly isn't the case that all restaurants in Ashland are facing, so they have a particular hardship here. And, um, and then giving them some extra time to, um, to then get, um, a, a per- a more permanent um, outdoor seating area in place. I think that makes it really very different than the TJ's project, which was looking to do something permanently right from the start. I would expect in the end that something that Mazzy produces would fit the, you know, would fit the image of Mazzy, you know, I guess, pre, before there was a tent in front of it, that, that image of Mazzy. Um, and I am very willing to give them that, the time they need to, to make that happen. Um, given that the first two years of that is, is nothing is gonna look beautiful in front of that, uh, in front of that construction, so.
Totally agree.
Um, I think, I think it's great, I applaud Mazzy for being creative and getting, you know, starting a restaurant in the pandemic and getting through. Um, I have a concern about just the planning board approving, because I think that a temporary structure is under the purview of the building commissioner. So I think we just have to be careful how we do approve it, um, because I do not believe, because it's, um, maybe it is under the planning board purview of taking away parking, but the structure, I believe, is under Mass General, uh, the CMR code for building commissioner.
Peter, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, I can weigh, I can weigh in, and, and I agree, obviously, I think, um, Kate, you know, we as the planning board have talked about, I've seen it a lot, I think Kate is correct in the sense that this is a tent, uh, and a, any tent permit that you would get is under CMR, which is the building commissioner's discretion. Um, you know, I think the permission, but the conversation here is to, to allow outdoor seating to take place as a use with a tent, uh, for a period to extend up to three years, um, during construction, obviously, to, 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 to continue more. But I, I agree, Kate, that, see, you know, with the structure, with a tent, it would fall under CMR, and a tent permit would be required. And I believe a tent permit would be required annually, um, to be pulled with the building office, um, by, by the, by Mazzy, um, as they have done to, to, as they. to to as a a as a seasonal requirement um if it moves forward.
We could make our decision um contingent on proper review or consistent with it.
Yeah, it just imagine, you know, obviously, you know, outdoor seating was extended by the governor's orders. Um with that said, the police and the fire department, we, you know, and then speaking for town staff, we have you know, looked at, you know, all the outdoor seating, try to look at all the outdoor seating for safety reasons and and for safe precaution. Uh fire and police have been out to the site uh regarding safety and the ballers. Um you know, I'm I'm happy to go out to the site and take some more pictures. Um and then email those around to the planning board as evidence for this application. Um but police and fire have checked in on this and obviously a tent permit was pulled. Uh because if we weren't, obviously, if town wasn't satisfied with that, it would not be up and running as it is. So just to make that note, but I agree with Kate, a tent permit would be required or 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 uh from at an annual basis.
Any other members of the planning board want to weigh in?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify the three-year thing, the the application that is on the website at least says permanent.
It it it's true. I I had asked Peter about that before the meeting as well.
Yeah, I I noticed that too and um I I think we just need to be really clear in our decision as to the timeframes and I mean, what what I'll say is is that for me, like, I I I I absolutely am on board with this project. I just want to time it so that how do I say this the right way? I think Mazzi is much fancier than its tent. And I think that you guys deserve a permanent structure as soon as possible in the three-year. I want to give you the freedom to do what you need financially to get there, but I also want to motivate a more permanent, beautiful structure sooner than the three-year marker. That's kind of where I'm at.
Deepa, um anyone else wanna? Sorry to sorry to, you know, call you out there, Deepa, but did you?
No, I no, I think all of you had some great points and I agree, Tricia, what you said when you Mazzi kind of probably paid a lot of attention when they built the original structure. So I don't feel that concerned that moving forward, that'll be where they'll go towards. Um this seems to be like more an interim solution before we get there. So I think all of you covered all the great points, right? Really didn't have much to add.
Yeah, I think in terms of the three, I think in terms of the three-year mark, I'm fine with that too because this is this is the first two years are two years of an outdoor structure continuing with at least some COVID hesitation and with constant construction. So right, right there are things that are going to be taken away from their business financially. And so giving them that two years plus, so that extra third year to to really get on their feet, I I think in in this situation um that's appropriate. I mean, I I'll be happy to say goodbye to the tent after that that three years, but I will be um glad, very glad um if and when Mazzi is still on its feet, so.
And in that three years, already that one year, every restaurant has that outdoor permission already. So it's kind of, when you look at it from that point of view, it's not that very far off, so.
Were you were you saying that the three years already started a year ago?
No, so the obviously all the restaurants have gotten permission to extend the outdoor seating for another year, right? Uh the governor has given that permission to extend out outdoor seating. So from that point of view, this is asking for two more years past that. Um and by the time the construction is done, I think, and the corridor will get a little more developed, hopefully, so I think it's a great, that would be a great time to write, start tying in the pieces along that corridor as well, so it's I am not disturbed with a three-year mark. It'll give them time to kind of recoup from the pandemic as well.
Just to uh jump in, just regarding timelines, uh Deeper is correct. The governor's orders um do a lot of outdoor seating until April twenty twenty-three. Um and just to make note, the Pond Street construction project is slated for completion uh spring, summer of two thousand and twenty-four.
Uh I I think I think that that summarizes it to me. Uh I I think we're better off with a tent that we we know Mazzi has proven to be a responsible business in the town and some someone that that provides um um a a good venue. Uh and I think we're better off making sure that we help Mazzi survive than 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 kind of uh uh focus too much on the tent. Uh I'm I'm convinced this is just temporary. Um and I trust that they will do a a a good job, just like they did before. When they propose something permanent, in the meantime, it's it's a temporary solution.
So Peter, knowing that only part of this is within our purview, um would it be appropriate to take um to to take a vote on this project, but we will look at and review conditions, of course, next time, because we we would not want to um or maybe we should, maybe we should take an informal vote on it and then look at conditions next time and then be able to vote on on the conditions as written. Maybe that's the better way to do it.
You know what, I I I from my conversation, I understand where the planning board's direction is going. So I'm gonna start, I think, you know, I think we don't have to make a formal vote or anything. I think I can start making a decision um and writing some draft conditions. Uh within the next week, I'm gonna go out to the site and I want to take a couple more pictures and I can circulate those to the planning board. And then uh as we come back uh on June ninth, uh I can have a decision and better pictures kind of outlining the property um and then conditions, and then we can kind of discuss those at the next meeting. But but for all intents and purposes, I think we're myself and everyone in the planning boards on the same page of of where we all stand on this application.
Does that in general sound agreeable to everyone? Okay, all right, sounds good. Then I think we are looking for a continuance until June ninth. Would that give you enough time, Peter, to put that together?
Yep, we can uh I can take the deck, taking care of that by June ninth, yep. And so, yeah, I would just be looking for a continuance for the public hearing and then we can um and then in that timeframe, the decision will be drafted and and pictures can be circulated.
I can make that motion, Tricia, if you do.
I was I was just gonna make sure that that continuance is agreeable to the applicant.
Um yeah, if that's if that's what you guys need, sure.
Okay, all right, you're on, Anna.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for three twenty Pond Street site plan review to June ninth.
Is there a second?
Second back.
And roll call vote?
Anna Tysmanitsky, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is five zero zero, and we will see you on June ninth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that is the end of our public hearings for the day. Um so we have other business to attend to. The first one on the list is the reorganization of the board. So every year, um obviously, we do this after election. So Peter, but why don't you take over from here? I think that would be more appropriate.
Yeah, so just uh everyone know, obviously, number one, I want to first welcome Catherine, uh her features to the planning board. Uh yeah, she uh she won the uh the three-year seat and then of uh then also Marcelo um won the five-year seat uh to the planning board, so welcome you both and obviously um you know, in in addition, you know, I you want to make sure you know Kevin uh is is still, you know, is not still, but is a valued member of the planning board as we continue on. Uh but I just want to make note of that. But with that, uh every year, the planning board tends to reorganize. Um there's three positions, there's chair, there's vice chair, and there's also the clerk. And so uh annually, we kind of go through this process. Um you know, who are, you know, who wants to be the chair and it's mostly, you know, working with myself a little bit closely. Um taking phone calls and kind of helping set the agenda. Um and then in addition, uh helping, you know, run and steer the meetings. As as they come. And so with that, and obviously, the vice chair will fill in for the chair if no one, uh if if they weren't available to make it. And then for the clerk position, uh the clerk is is traditionally responsible for um reading the public hearing notices into the public record. Um traditionally, the clerk would also be responsible for minutes, however, he has minutes professionally completed for the planning board. Um so that item is kind of taken away from the clerk, and I don't think any clerk has complained about that in the last decade. So with that said, I would like to obviously open it up to discussion. Uh Tricia has served us as chair um for the last year. Um and um it is up to the six members of the planning board to kind of discuss the next steps um moving forward.
Well, Peter, it looks like there's no hard and fast rule of how communities do this. Is there one? Is there a requirement that the term changes every year?
So in my experience, I would say um the there's no hard and fast rule that a chair and a person rotates. Uh I have been in situations in previous communities where a chair has been the chair for ten years running uh and and even longer. And and so um some boards and committees and towns, they do have a rotating uh a rotating um leadership. Uh however, there is no hard and fast rule. There's nothing in our bylaws, nothing in state legislation um that really outlines that. It's just a, it's it's just a matter of um on an annual basis, who is going to kind of fill it, fill the board, fill the gap. Um just to make note, in addition to the reorganization, there is a membership roster that typically is signed. Um and that your signature is therefore reported at the registry deeds. Um and so that is the part of the reorganization that kind of makes everything official. Um and that kind of gets linked to the A and R plans. And so it's a planning board is the official um board that can manipulate and create boundary lines. Um those A and R plans and subdivision plans um that the planning board signs and get reported, the registry deeds can be cross-referenced with a, I call a membership roster, which is reported at the registry deed. So um the reorganization is one step. That is the second step, just the signature page, which is therefore reported. But that's kind of getting a little bit too into the minutia of the reorganization. But the reorganization, there's no hard and fast rule to answer your question, Deepa.
Thank you.
Just like, I mean, just like any other elected board, like the select board, we can have our own informal rules. So the select board rotates through every year with every election. Is that right, Peter?
I believe so, yep. I believe so.
Um so although there's no no specific rule, we as a board could contemplate and figure out our own rules as a board, um almost like take a vote on our process um as a board. I mean, we don't need to make this decision on the spot today, right? This is more to kind of get get our get us thinking as to what we might want to do, or are we aiming, Tricia, today to make this decision?
Actually, I I think it is something where the the board needs leadership. And while we can spend time during the calendar year discussing um if we want to put some kind of schedule in place, you know, uh some kind of rotation in place, that would probably be a a longer discussion. Um but it's my understanding that the board doesn't go forward without leadership and that officially my term ends today, so.
Because that one year feels, I mean, I understand the select board does it because the number of things that come to their plate probably has a quick turnaround versus what comes to the planning board. Like, for example, projects that we get are probably a longer term. So it feels like you need that continued leadership through the life of that, at least. It's not like drag it for five years. For me, that one-year term feels like not a great or sufficient term for a leader to run through some of those larger projects that come in front of us. And I know in this one year, um was it almost six months that we had been in the school? And I know, Tricia, you stepped away and Joe sat at that chair. So technically, you've been on this chair only for six months. Um so I'm just curious, like, does that feel like not the right approach for planning board? But I understand the fact that you rotate that leadership. It helps with new ideas and kind of that different leadership uh styles that come out uh which definitely is great, but I don't know if that's the right approach for the planning board, but that's just me.
Yeah, again, I don't think it's something that we would want to put in place in a single discussion in a meeting. I think um we we take votes tonight for those positions. And any kind of policy that we want to create is going to be a I I would assume a longer discussion, maybe it's part of a retreat, um but not rushed um in a single meeting. I I'm not sure how they came upon, the the school committee doesn't have a similar rotation. Uh I don't believe the Board of Health does either, though I'm not quite sure about that. And I don't know how the select board arrived at that or or for how long they've been doing it. I'm not sure, so.
I I I concur with Deepa. I I I think le- leadership, I think, is derived from consistency, especially on the planning board, so. I I'm I'm not a big fan of constant rotation myself.
Like, I'm on another board and we literally have different titles. And it's literally a three-year term. We play different roles, like one year we're treasurer, one year we're president, and the other, we become an immediate past president. But the three years, we have that similar kind of role, but it takes that much time for somebody's kind of leadership style to really come out and shine. So that's what um triggered that question, but.
I was gonna say, Peter, so is the process, yeah.
So typically, the process would be, you know, someone would nominate a somewhere could step forward and and present themselves and as as one would like to act as a president, one also can nominate one as the president, as the kind of that, as we have traditionally done in Ashland, um to move things forward. You know, so, you know, I think number one, starting with the chair, vice chair, clerk is the way that kind of falls into order, so um you know, you know, i- if you were willing to be chair for another year. You know, I think you and I worked hand in hand the last year, and I'm happy to work with anybody in the board, you know, working as the chair. Um but uh but that's the way it would kind of fall. So either someone can step forward and or another member can nominate another member um into each position.
I nominate Tricia for chair.
I concur.
Uh so at this point, there would be a vote, uh let's see, there was a motion and a second. Um and so therefore, there would be a rule called vote of uh of the planning board. And I would start with, excuse me, Tricia.
First of all, first of all, one has to accept the nomination.
That's true.
Or go run running, screaming out the door. Um I I did want to say that that it it's true, it wasn't six months that Joe that Joe took over, but it was three to four, I I think. I'd never kind of went back and counted, but but though I had never, and I've said this before, I had never expected to be, in the few years I feel like I've been on the chair that the planning board, never expected to be chair at this point, I do feel like I feel like I'm finally getting the hang of it and all the different parts of it. And um though it is quite a bit of work, I feel like I'm on, I'm I feel like I'm on track to doing a good job and I could do a better job as I as I go forward and have some more experience and I'm I thanks, thank you for the nomination. I'm I'm willing to do that again if if um if that's what the board decides.
Uh thank you, Tricia. Um so at this point, it would just kind of go to a rule called vote. If someone is going to start and the I can call out names and have to do either. Um but uh I will start with Deepa. Okay.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, so I thank you.
Thank you.
Cool, congratulations.
I'm not sure it's a congratulations, but we will see what the next year brings.
Uh so the next step would be a vice chair. Uh and I believe the vice chair was actually, position was actually held by Joe Rubitone, who obviously uh stepped off the board uh this past November, December. Um and so it would be the same process. Um if someone wanted to step forward and or nominate um a a board member, um please step forward and 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 um and make that Um, please step forward and, 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 um, and make that, um, motions.
I can go again, but I guess for me it's either Marcelo or Anna. I don't know who will be willing to step up to that, um, but I think both of you have equal to me.
Actually, I, I was going to nominate Anna if she's amenable, because I think with her, her, her passion and her understanding of, of the regulations. I think it's, it's, it's in the process. It seems to me like the right fit.
I mean, uh, what I was gonna say is, I think that, um, the board right now is extremely tech, tech. Technically experienced as far as design and architecture and construction. Especially with our new, new members. Um, so, and with our associate member Kevin. So I, I do think it may be helpful to the board to have me in a VP role as far as supporting Tricia. Because I think we are a very tech-heavy, tech-heavy board. Um, and to have someone with a little bit more of the statutory kind of. Legal-ish background, I think would be helpful to balance this board. Um, so I, I would be honored to serve, assuming that there is a majority vote.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so I'll just do a rule called vote. Uh, Tricia Kendall?
Aye.
Catherine Jersey?
Aye.
Deepa Ventek?
Aye.
Marcelo Hona?
Aye.
And Anna Tasmalski?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations.
All right. We have a VP again, or VC, I guess.
Yes. And the last position is the clerk. Um, does anybody want to step forward and or make a motion to become the clerk of the planning board?
Of those positions?
Uh, traditionally, I, I would have to look at the statute. I don't, I don't know. Um, I don't know.
It's not a voting position, but.
Yeah, I think since.
I don't read that well anyways.
I'm, I'm guessing that it doesn't serve on every meeting. That, that probably, that, it probably can't be an officer, which I, I would assume. But the clerk actually, before Lakshmi, we didn't even have a clerk. Um, and, uh. Peter, did you just read that? You might have read the public hearing notices or maybe.
I traditionally would just read the public hearing notices before we really had a clerk. And those are going back to the days when we had Preston, uh, who was the chair and he was the chair for ten plus years, you know, rolling.
But it is, but it is, yeah, but it is the kind of the, the, it is one of the. Uh, maybe it's the only remaining after, after not doing the meeting minutes, it's the only role of the clerk is to just read the public hearing notice.
Correct.
It's to me like it's an outdated, uh, position. I mean, if, I mean, a cleric by definition is, is, is someone that, that does a certain clerical work. And if he's just reading, uh, why do we need this position? That seems like redundant to me.
Well, we can, I mean, we can define these positions as a board, right? We do have the ability as a voting board to make decisions and to point, to point all kinds of positions. So let's say we do undertake a comprehensive plan, we could define the clerk's position in a better way. And frame that position better, um, because the clerk could be quite useful to us. If we as a planning board take on a plan that involves a lot of public meetings or, or comments. Where the, the minutes component could actually come back to us and be helpful to us.
Then that might, then that might mean that we cannot create that position right now. Cause anyone stepping into it would not know what their responsibilities are and thus would not be able to make a decision on it.
Yeah, I, I, that sounds to me, I, I agree. It sounds to me like that, that's a bridge that you can't, you can cross it when you get to it.
I mean, you could also step down. You could step down from, from serving and be, you know, we could reappoint somebody. So there, that's also a flexible type of thing.
So Peter, do we need a clerk? We, we did, we did not, we did not have one before Lakshmi.
I think as long as we have a chair and a vice chair, I, I am more than confident to, to move ahead. I can look at, I can, I'll, I can look at, you know, having a clerk. I think traditionally, you know, just speaking to Marcelo, I think a lot of communities before the town planners, the clerk was the one that. Obviously, uh, helped process applications, you know, worked with a town clerk to process that application. And then did the mailing and it kind of took care of that, read of that kind of.
And actually.
That background and stuff.
I take back what I said. I think we did have a clerk. I think I was the clerk at one point. But I did, but did nothing, like didn't even read the, I think I was the one who tried to figure out what a clerk did. Realized that they typically read, when I became chair, read that they typically read out the public hearings. Yeah, and then Lakshmi became the clerk and read the public hearings.
So, uh, I'll move ahead and say that, uh, to propose that, that we eliminate that, that n- n- nominal position. Um, plus Peter does a beautiful job reading those, uh, the applications. Uh, and, and, and if, if the situation changes, we can, can address it then.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
I think that's perfect.
We probably don't need an official vote on that. We probably just don't have a clerk. Was it?
Yeah. I would just leave it, leave it be.
All right. Fair enough. Um, on the rest of the items, I actually don't. I don't have a printer here, so I don't have a, I don't have the, uh, agenda in front of me. So Peter, can you kind of lead the way with whatever else is remaining on the agenda?
Bond release is next, right?
Yeah, so, uh, the bond release for signature estates to, um, this is a roadway that was actually developed by the Fafra company. It's right near the Villas Americas. And it was a, um, it's called Signature Estates. There was one, there was two. It created, um, Royal Colony, it's called, I believe it was Connecticut Estates. Then there was Signature, uh, excuse me, Royal Colony Road. And it's a cul-de-sac that goes up, the hill goes up a hill. Permitted, developed prior to, I, myself and, and anybody on the board. Um, two thousand eighteen way was built, it was constructed, it was actually accepted by the town. Um, in two thousand, at the spring, uh, two thousand and eighteen, annual town meeting. Um, there, at that time, I believe the DPW was working with the Fafra company to take care of the grading issue at the top of the cul-de-sac. Um, and Doug Small, DPW director, has, um, has really spearheaded. Um, the, the grading issue and the correction to the grading issue. Um, that has taken place at the top of the cul-de-sac. Um, additionally, the, the residents there have, have been in contact with him. They've done some landscaping in the island. Um, but with that said, the town of Ashland, the planning board, we still hold a five thousand dollar bond. Um, which is right now being, which the Fafra company has asked to, for us to release. Um, therefore, um. I have reached out to the DPW director, Doug Small, and he replied with an email, and I believe I sent this out to everybody. Uh, but I am just gonna read it into the public record. Um, Doug Small's email, uh, is dated, uh, Wednesday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Title is the bond, bond release signature estates and is from Doug Small, Ashland DPW director to Peter Matzek, Ashland Town Planner. Um, and it says, uh, number one, my email to Doug reads the following. Doug, recently the Fafra company has requested the town release a five thousand dollar roadway bond. That has been held by the town concerning signature states. In particular, the bond was posted for grading work at the top of the cul-de-sac of Royal Colony Drive. The expert was championed by you and others. Uh, as we know, the roadway was accepted by the town in two thousand and eighteen. Can you please respond concerning the DPW stocks and the release of these funds being held by the planning board? Question mark. Thank you, Peter. Doug Small responded on Wednesday, excuse me, May eighteenth, a little bit later in the day. Uh, Doug Small to Peter Matzek, Doug Small, DPW director, Town, Peter Matzek, Town Planner. Peter, comma, I feel that the Fafra company has successfully met their obligations for the town pertaining to the roadway work. At the top of the Royal Colony Drive cul-de-sac. I see no reason why the town should not release five thousand dollars of bond with regards Doug, Doug Small, DPW director. With that said, it's a small amount. Um, I checked in the DPW. It, and, and this is a town accepted roadway back to two thousand and eight. And in my eyes, this is just a administrative, um, administrative, uh, point. To, uh, release these funds, uh, but I will open up to the planning board with any questions or concerns.
I am good with this.
Me too.
Me too.
I don't have any concerns.
Someone with the, uh, agenda in front of them went to, uh, make the motion.
I, I was ready to, and then I lost the agenda. Give me a second.
Catherine, do you have any, uh, Kate, do you have any concerns?
Uh, the whole process in general, yes, but not with this one.
It, I, I'll, I'm happy to meet and go over it and subdivisions are different and it, it's, it's a different situation. But, um, I think I, I'm happy to meet and go over all the steps that we.
Um, no, I just think we have to do a better job on what we, when we do accept. And I think obviously that does at least somewhat go to the planning board. So I can make a motion that we, the planning board vote to release the bond for signature estates too.
I'll second it.
A rule called vote.
Deepa Wankatai.
Anna Tasmansky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. All right.
We should do this voting by spelling order. So Anna goes first, A, B, C, D. It's like, I don't know where I became first now.
Oh, it was just.
I, I never know what order we're supposed to do.
Seniority when we went on, like when we went online versus being, versus being in, in the broom, you know.
Okay.
Whatever the right order, if Peter gets me the right order that we're supposed to vote in, I will follow it. I have no idea what it is, so.
I can get, I can get you the order, whatever you, whatever we need it. Um, can I continue on?
Yes, please.
Uh, the next item is item number C, applications received. Um, we have no current, we have no new applications received. However, I do need to let everyone know that we've received, uh, updated renderings for twelve Pond Street. This is the project, um, which will be approved and reviewed and is under construction. And this pertains to the, uh, front facade of the building facing Pond Street. Um, this goes back a couple of months, um, where the applicant, Mr. Charles Amudo. Was talking about colors and bricks, um, and finishing the building. Um, and so, um, at the last meeting, going back a couple of months, there was really no conclusion and no determination. Um, this previous allowed him to put the windows that will be able to roll up, um, for, for restaurant seating. Um, however, he is following back up with the planning board, um, with renderings, uh, and I have those digitally. I will be sending those out to the planning board, um, and he also has professional architectural. Um, he has submitted professional, uh, prints, um, with some color renderings. And so, um, as people come into town hall, they sign the A and R plan, it's assigned to Peter, the planning board roster. I will be able to circulate out those, um, prints of the facade, which I am looking to put. And or which I will look to put on an upcoming planning board agenda. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? No? Okay. Um, the second note under the application, uh, item number C. I do need to let everyone know that we received an appeal of our three eleven Pleasant Street, um, decision. Regarding the special permit for the Sora project. Um, the special permit obviously was, uh, as people remember, received, uh, three votes in the positive, two in the negative. For special permits, uh, you need super majority, four votes, uh, in the positive. Uh, so therefore that, that vote, uh, is rejected, that vote failed. Um, cause we rejected the application, uh, and the applicant has, um, appealed within the, um. Chapter, um, forty-eight, section seventeen, uh, time period, which would be twenty days. Uh, and so therefore, um. Again, I'll be sending out that appeal, but it's been filed with Superior Court and, uh, town council has been notified. Uh, that happened, uh, yesterday and, uh, and I will be circulating that information as that comes up. Um, I haven't received an appeal in a while, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to dust off a little bit on what the next steps will be. But I, I know enough to, uh, update to, to, to tell town council and, and, and tell my, uh, obviously the town manager. And I believe he was, uh, in the process of alerting the select board while I'm in the process of alerting the planning board. But that documentation will be circulated.
Peter, can you just clarify, what I recall about that project is there was two decisions, one passed, the other one failed?
Correct.
So when the appeal happens, the appeal, how does that work?
They appealed, they, they appealed the special permit decision. And it starts a Superior Court and then it moves forward.
So did the entire project not pass because one decision, we did not have super majority?
Correct.
And, and, and you, you haven't had any comment from town council on that? Cause I remember the, 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 uh, the proposition was that, as, as I understood it. Was that the planning board had no, pretty much no business, uh, based on the way they interpreted the law. Uh, which seemed really bizarre to me, but, uh, I wonder what the town council, uh, thinks about it.
I, I'm gonna, I'll get, you know, it was just filed, you know, the other day. And so, um, the last couple of days have been busy, so I have, really haven't got her opinion and I, I was going to give it to her. Uh, she comes into town hall every Wednesday, so next Wednesday I, I've, I've set up a meeting with her to review it. Uh, and then I'll be able to report back, but, um. I can tell you, this isn't the first time a planning board decision's been litigated and it's definitely not the last. And, and so this is just, uh, the, the cost of doing business.
And it's not like there's anything for us to do until the court rules, right?
Correct. It's.
We just sit back and wait.
Twenty-day appeal period, they appealed it, now it goes to the, to the court. And obviously I'll circulate their, their, their moat indoor. They're, they're, I'll, 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 I'll circulate the paperwork and then I'll, so everyone can see. But, uh, yeah, there's nothing that we, the planning board can do. Um, we, the planning board need to move forward and, and continue to review the public hearings that we're doing. And that, that's the only thing that we can do. It's outside of our field. Unless it gets remembered back. And that's a, another conversation to have. Uh, can I continue on? The last item, uh, well, not the last item, but item number D is the future retreat date. Uh, Emma sent out a doodle poll along with a memo regarding, uh, updone, upcoming dates. Uh, I believe the majority of folks have responded June twenty-ninth is the date that works the best. However, deeper in Marcelo, uh, you still haven't, but we're, we're, we're waiting for you to weigh in.
Oh, I did, I did, oh, maybe that was, there was more than one? Cause I remember doing it. Oh, maybe it's the one that, that Brandy sent out?
Yeah, there was the one Brandy sent out.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. So I'll, I'll, sorry, I, I thought I had.
It's okay. I'm the same way, so, uh, but I just want to make note. Uh, and we'll follow up next week, early next week about that. This is the intended item. Um, discussion, uh, anybody, any other comments on that?
Um, not on that. I just wanted.
One of our dates overlapped with one of Brandy's dates, but I'm sure we can figure that out.
Okay.
That becomes our, our choice.
Brandy's dates might have to take precedence, because I think there was really hard to, uh, find a date for the select board and the. To talk, and it's partly one of our goals anyway, to talk about comprehensive plans, so I think they only had three dates that they could come up with.
Okay.
But Peter, I was gonna say, I just wanted to confirm that, um, the memos to. The design review committee for one hundred Chestnut, which is maybe more straightforward. And five oh one, which maybe needs a little bit of modification after today's meeting, would then be sent. To design, the design review committee from those projects are in front of them is.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I just put this on the agenda just as a follow-up item. I created those memos. I'm gonna, um, obviously I think a hundred chestnut is there. Um, I'll make the modifications to five oh one and then those are gonna go up through the designer.
Okay.
And, um, I think we're, we're, it's, I think it's just. Collecting all the information at the last meeting. Obviously, we want to come up with a, uh, excuse me, my computer, okay. Who's gonna shut off on me? Who's gonna shut off on me? We want to come up with a process in, within communications, and I just want to send out, you know, to say we created a memo, and this is what we're gonna do, and, but yes, that will be circulated to the planning board.
Okay.
And I do have just F as a reminder that in-person meetings would, the ability for Zoom meetings is, is going to lapse on July 15th of 2022. I fully expect the Carmel of Massachusetts to extend this date. I just want to continue to give, remind everybody that not just this board, but all boards are coming up on that, that timeline. I have not heard anything from the state, from, from the state coming down about that extension, but last time, the state read it lapsed, and then two days later they extended, so we may be waiting till July 17th, I just don't know, but just to kind of put that on everyone's radar. And then moving on, we have a bunch of minutes that need to be approved, and I know it's late, but there were five sets of minutes that were circulated in if anybody wants to.
I reviewed, I reviewed all of them, and I didn't have any changes other than the one about our retreat where we spoke about the comprehensive plan. I did send Peter and Emma just an hour ago, my, my, my notes from that, because I felt like the comprehensive plan is so important to this board that the retreat minutes from it didn't give the, in my opinion, didn't give the, the proper attention to what we actually discussed. Which is understandable, because I think, Peter, you were taking notes during that meeting, and that's hard to like be in a retreat and take notes. So I did send that to Peter and Emma an hour ago. I don't know, Peter, if you want to throw it up on the, on the share it, if we can look at that. I don't know if it's worthwhile to try to do that. These are pretty old notes, minutes. Do we have to approve them today?
I'm happy to do either way. I'm happy to take your minute, take your edits and circulate those back out, and you can come back in two weeks.
Yeah, because I also, I also read the other ones, just like Anna said, I didn't find anything that was out of place.
Okay.
The only thing I found, March 23rd one, is that spelling of Ms. Solomon wrong? It feels like it should be S O L O M A N versus S O O L. I noticed that that is consistent.
You got Roberta Solomon?
Yeah, that's what I thought her last name was, but the meeting minutes have S O O L M A N.
And that's the 31st?
I think Roberta's last name is S, I think Roberta's last name has two Os, S O O L M A N.
Oh, is that what's, okay, that's what is in the meeting minutes, so I wasn't sure if that was right.
Yeah, I just looked it up. I think we're okay.
And the other one is Lakshmi is sometimes clerk, sometimes vice chair. Is that intentional?
Yeah, I noticed that too, so she should be listed as clerk, and there shouldn't be any vice chair since Joe left.
Yes, I will fix that.
Yeah, so that is, it's a couple times. I did have, I did have a couple things, but I think if, I think if I just tell you, Peter, you can probably just make a note. And they're pretty, they're pretty quick. One, this is the March 3rd, line 106. We, it's referred to as 510 Pond Street instead of 501. Obviously not a huge thing.
I just made a correction. I got it.
Okay. And then, just kind of opening these randomly. On the March 31st meetings, line 23, spelling of Joseph, Joseph Markwodant. Line 32, there's a thing, reviewed the cross-section elevation plan. I think you need to, I think you can take off elevation and plan, because I think it's, it was for 311 Pleasant Street, and I think it's where where we asked for a cross-section through the site, so I think you can take off the words elevation plan. That was on line 32. On line 71, it said, the line is, and said that there have been any significant changes to the entrance. I think it's that there have not been any significant changes to the entrance. I was talking with Icon Architecture on.
At Marada.
Yeah, yep.
And said that.
Yeah, I think there should be, there was not any changes, but it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, I got it.
All right, I think that's all for that one. Let me see the next one here. Oh, on the next, on April 14th, the only thing I had on April 14th, I think was that we typically, we typically, when we tie the 501 Pond Street hearings, we have a note, you can probably grab it off another set of meeting minutes about that Anna, Anna stepping down and Kevin stepping in. Like I said, I think we've used the same note before, and I think that's it. So, little, little stuff.
Do we want to, do we want to try? I know the February 16th is the oldest. Do we want to take a stab at looking at my notes, or do we want to just put it off two weeks? I just don't want to get the board into trouble as far as the timing of that one.
I'm gonna let that up to you guys, because I'm an hour earlier than you are.
I definitely agree, Anna, that you, it was very light on the meeting minutes, but I forgot that we did that in person, so obviously, amount of notes that was taken is definitely challenging, so I would love to read your notes. I agree with you that we should revisit that paper.
Okay. Are we okay waiting two weeks, Peter? Because it's the 16th thing.
Since, since I think this is the very last thing we're doing tonight, can you just throw them up and see if we're, you know, maybe it's not that, maybe it's obvious, an obvious acceptance?
And this was just a, this relates to the comprehensive plan paragraph. I just made it a little bit more detailed, because it said 24 months. It was actually a three-year plan. I filled it in a lot more than what we had. Peter, do you want to share your screen? Because I don't think I have that power.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get to it. I'm clearing a couple things.
And then the other thing, the substance, the substance part I changed is I recall we decided to send it to the select board. I don't believe we said to send it to the town manager. But I could be wrong. That part I think I need you guys to think about, but I remember discussing getting the select board's approval through a letter. So that's a substantive change I made. I removed the town manager component, because I don't recall us talking about a letter to the town manager. And then I added context for some of the things we talked about, like we talked about capacity, we talked about public input, we talked about the importance of a consultant, a contract position for capacity. Peter filled us into kind of the general consistency of the plan for, based on his experience. I kind of gave it that flavor.
Can everyone see that?
So this would replace the comprehensive plan paragraph.
It sounds good to me. Anna?
Yep, me too.
I think Deepa is muted, so I want to make sure.
I was just trying to read that. She explained the draft allows 2022 to build a strong foundation for support about keyboards.
Oh, from, sorry, for support from keyboards. Thank you. Yeah, that should say.
Still awake.
Yeah, thank you. I think we're all fast readers at this point at 10:52 PM.
No, because it was definitely a good conversation. I did find it light, but yeah, it looks like you've covered majority points. It felt like we talked about financial this one a little bit, kind of touched about what the town manager had shared with us earlier, and how we should kind of plan on looking at that as well.
Yes, that's a good idea to add, to add a sentence like that, maybe something like, the board discussed the town managers, managers' input about bringing, bringing a request for financial support towards town meeting, right? Something like that.
Yeah, felt like that kind of was also setting your timeline accordingly for the next three years. Felt like that we talked about, we also.
Do you want me to, do you want me to send you that sentence?
I just wrote it down, so I'm happy to, to to try to plug it in, and if you want to send it to me, I'm happy to listen to it.
Okay, I can, let me, I'll just, I'll write it as I, as we're speaking, so some, so the board discussed the importance of timing the comprehensive plan in a manner that would assure proper financial support by a town meeting process per prior discussion with the town manager. How does that sound? The board discussed the importance of timing the comprehensive plan in a manner that would assure proper financial support via town meeting process per prior discussion with town manager. It's very wordy. Peter, maybe you can clean it up a little bit, just to make it less gibberish, but I think it covers, if the spirit of it is consistent with people's recollection, I think that will work.
No, I'll take it. I think that sounds perfect, and I'll fit it in and go from there.
So how do we go about approving these? Do we need to wait for a redraft, or can we take a stab at these? Like, how do we do it en masse, or?
I think, I think we can just, we can approve, you know, with the, you know, accepting the adoption, accepting the, accepting the edits and the additions by, you know, you in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, we can add these to the, to the draft meeting minutes with approval, and just approve them with the amendments.
Can we, can we say, yeah, can, can we, I guess we can do these ones separate, and then can we list, list all the other ones and say approved as modified?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was getting too far into the weeds. Yeah, I think we can just say the February 16th, 2022 meeting minutes can be approved with the adoption of member in a, as Molski's email, and go from there.
How about we just say, how about we just say, I'm gonna make a motion that the planning board minutes from 216, 22 are approved as modified?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Banka die.
Anna Tesmeniski, aye.
I'll say a little more aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. I was gonna say, who is there? Sorry. Okay, and then can I make a general motion, or will I be violating some open meeting law if I just list all the other ones and say as modified, Peter?
Nope, I think that's appropriate.
One of the others that I wasn't at.
Yeah.
Right, right.
The only, the only thing else, and I also was not at one of them. I think one of them has to do with the sidewalk. So I think we have to do that one separately.
We might have to do a bunch of them separately. Okay, so I'm looking at now
March 3rd.
Yeah, my, my internet's slow here, so I can't, trying to get it open again, but if someone tells, oh, there we, let's see, Marcelo is there, Kevin is there, Deep is there, we're all there.
Okay.
So, okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the March 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes as modified.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote.
Keep on going, good day.
Anna Tesmeniski, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. Moving on to March 23rd, tell me if I skip one.
You're good.
Yep. That's a sidewalk too.
Yeah, that's the same order.
Okay. All right, so it's the four of us. Oh, no, Lakshmi's not there, so it's just me, Deepa, and Kevin, all right? I will, I don't, and we didn't change anything, so I will make a motion to accept the March 23rd, 2022 meetings and meeting minutes as written.
Second that.
All right, so roll call vote, it's.
Deepa, I'm good, aye.
McLean, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye, there's that one. 331, which one was that?
That's the time I wasn't there.
That's the Trisha, Anna, Deepa, Marcelo one.
Trisha, Anna, Deepid, okay, so the four of us. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of March 31st, 2022 as amended.
I'll second that.
And we'll start with Deepa.
Keep on going, good day.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead, Marcelo.
I jumped the order here, because Anna was so quiet, so.
I think you both got in there. Trisha Kendall, aye. I heard both of you, so that's 400, and then oh goodness, here's April 14th. I think that's the last one, right?
Yeah, I don't think I was at that one.
Let's see.
Correct.
Yeah, it says no Marcelo.
Sorry, I'm trying, okay, there. I'm making a motion to accept the April 14th, 2022 meeting minutes. I'll say as, I don't know if there were any changes, but I'll say as amended.
I think there's a change of the clerk versus.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so I'll say as amended.
I'll second that.
All right, start with Deepa.
Keep on going, good day.
Anna Tesmeniski, aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. All right, that is 400, and I think that's all of them.
I concur, that's all of them.
Yay, okay.
All right, we are caught up.
All right, if there's nothing else, someone can make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
And a roll call vote.
Keep on going, good day.
Anna Tesmeniski, aye.
I'll say a little more aye.
M. Jersey, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye, so.
11 o'clock, we did it. Catherine, Catherine and Marcelo, welcome, and more form, I just wanted to say welcome, so.
Thank you. Congratulations. I haven't talked to you since election day, but well deserved.
Thank you.
You gave a tough competition, Kevin.
I don't know if you saw the vote calls.
So, being new to town, you hardly beat on like four or five sessions, so I think for that, I think it was a good number.
It's always good to see contested elections in Ashland, Kevin, so that's important. I think as a town, we need more of those.
And in any case, I think we have a really good team here going forward, so thanks, everybody, and.
Have a great night. I hope, I hope your mom feels better.
Trish, yeah. Thanks. I hope to be back in a week, but it's still up in the air, so thank you.
I need more of that.